All right. Good morning, everyone. All right. Thank you. Good morning. The City of Boston zoning board of appeals hearing for January 10th, 2023 is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature regarding virtual hearings. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings through March 2023. The hearing of the board is held is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, austin.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer to comment and the time for commenting at as time constraints require. For this reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click on the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by phone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star nine to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first before they provide the comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Aiken reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. Okay, roll call. Mr. Aiken.
This is David Aiken.
Oh, okay.
Are you here?
David Aiken, yes, here. Am I taking roll call, or is Mr. Aiken taking roll call?
Usually, the chair takes the roll call.
Okay, sorry about that. Ms. Better Barazza?
Present.
Mr. Aiken spoke. Mr. Shepherd?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, present.
Good morning. Mr. Valencia?
Good morning, I'm present.
Thank you. Ms. Weewell?
Good morning, I'm present.
Thank you. Mr. Langham? I saw him earlier. Mr. Langham?
He is on, Madam Chair, he's just muted.
Okay. All right, with that, so firstly, I just, we're in a new year, Happy New Year 2023. I just want to take a minute to thank members of the prior board who are not continuing for their many years of public service, as well as to welcome my fellow newly appointed and reappointed members to the zoning board repeal. So, thank you. So, first order of business, approval of the hearing minutes of November 15th, November 17th, and December 6th of 2022. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair. Oh. Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval of the minutes.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Thank you. Minutes of, sorry, chair also says yes. Minutes approved.
All right. We'll go to extensions here for 9:30 a.m., calling first case BOA 1035611. Address is 28 Goodell Road. Is there an applicant, is the applicant here? If so, please state name and address for the record.
Oh, yes, my name is Hazakaya Pratt, and I'm the architect for the project. My address is 454 Low Avenue, Mass.
Okay. Board members, the recommendation from the board is, I'm sorry, from council, is that the relief was originally granted on October 9th, 2020, was appealed to the Superior Court. That appeal was dismissed on January 1st, 2021, so the relief remains valid until January 21st, 2023. And the recommendation is the board grant extension relief if we find it appropriate to do so. Does the applicant wish to add anything?
No, you said exactly no. We look forward to the extension and completing this project for the new owner, actually.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. Do I have a, do I have a motion?
I make a motion. I'm sorry. I make a motion to approve.
A second.
Okay. Mr. Ms. Better Barazza?
Oh, Madam Chair, this is Tom. Can I?
Yes.
How long of the extension do you want to extend? One year, two year, six months?
Okay. Mr. Valencia, can you add to your motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve for one year.
Thank you.
From January 21, 2022, correct? Or January 21 to 2023?
Is that what, I'm sorry, wouldn't that be to one year from, that would be January 2024, correct?
Yes.
Madam Chair, I think it should be from one year from January 21st, 2023.
Okay.
One year from today.
Data expiration.
Okay.
Okay, so one year from January 21st, you said, is that right?
Yeah, so grant relief from January 21, 2023 to January 21st, 2024.
Okay, thank you. So may I have a second?
A second.
Okay. Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Ms. Langham, Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Madam Chair says yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, second extension case is BOA 763614, address of 7 Cleveland Street. Is the applicant here? If so, state name and address for the record, please.
Yes, this is Vernon Woodworth, 9 Elizabeth Street in Mattapan.
Okay. The recommendation from board councils that this relief was originally granted on July 12th, 2019, and even with COVID, the COVID tolling relief would have expired on October 17th, 2022, or has expired on October 17th, 2022. And typically, extensions must be submitted prior to the expiration date, and the recommendation is that the request for an extension is denied unless we can hear a compelling reason as to why the extension should be granted.
Mr. Woodworth?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This project has been in the works for over six years. It was approved for design review after an extensive period during the COVID period, at which time a separate architectural firm was hired to execute the construction documents. That firm unfortunately met with financial difficulty and was disbanded. It was a long difficult process to retrieve the documents and resume control over the project, at which time we discovered that the tolling had expired. But the project has been through extensive review by the neighborhood association and the anonymity to the neighborhood, not least by providing two additional dwelling units, excuse me, in the additional building where the services are currently held.
And how much time would you be seeking?
We are ready, Madam Chair, to submit for final permits, approval, but that can be lengthy, so I would say here would be our preference.
Are there any other questions from the board?
How many times can we extend? How many times can we grant an extension usually?
Have you had an extension before, Mr. Woodworth?
No.
Okay. Are there other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I could put forward a motion of extension from one year expiration date from October 17th, 2022.
Okay, may I have a second?
Alan Langham, second.
Thank you. Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Madam Chair says yes, motion carries. Thank you, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next case?
Okay, going into hearing scheduled for 9:30 a.m. First, are there any requests for deferrals and withdrawals for the 9:30 a.m. cases only?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Secretary. Attorney Nick Cizula McDermott Quillteen Miller, this is for 1617 Tremont Street, Mr. Aiken. It is on the 930s, it's about six or seven down.
Thank you.
Can you elaborate?
Deferral?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Aiken, yes, this again is for 1617 Tremont Street in Mission Hill. You'd like to request a deferral. We need to finalize community process. We also need to file revised plans with ISD in order to re-advertise for some additional relief that we might need. So we need a few months in order to do that.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to defer.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair says yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I just think we need a date, if you don't mind, for the discussion.
Yes, Mr. Aiken, can you provide a date?
I apologize, thank you.
How long would it be?
You said a few months.
Yes, yes, sir, that would be great.
April or May?
April would be great, Mr. Secretary.
April 11th.
April 11th would be great, Mr. Secretary, thank you very much.
11:30, okay, yep.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. In my rush to do the best of me, Mr. Fortune, I did skip over the G-Cod groundwater conservation overlay district 9:30 a.m. hearing, so we'll go back to that first.
Thank you.
I'm gonna read that. It is case BOA 1413023, the address is 41 La Graine Street. The applicant is SFH 48 Boylston LLC. The violation is Article 32, Section 4. The violation description is G-Cod applicability. Madam Chair, I'm actually going to recuse myself from this case, but there's representative for the applicant. Please announce yourself and provide your name and address. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Plagini on behalf of the applicant. Business address at 10 Forbes Road in Braintree. As Mr. Aiken stated, this is 41 La Graine Street, a deeply affordable 19-story building with 126 residential units, providing up to the low and moderate income residents in the China County area. As far as AMIs, 50% fifty of the units will be less than 30%, five less than 50, four less than 60, three less than 80, and three less than 110. We provided the board the Article 32 compliance letter showing no negative impacts in the groundwater levels, and I think Mr. Simonelli should be on this call can verify all that.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Chris Simonelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both letters from the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Yes, I have a question. This project was approved by the BPDA in 2019. What happened with the project during the last three years?
There was some litigation, Mr. Valencia, that was around this that prevented them from moving forward at that time, from a challenge in a letter.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No, we're just only reviewing G-Cod, correct?
All right, may I have a motion?
I think we have to hear from the public, no?
Oh, sorry. Good point. May I take testimony in support of the application? Is there any? Any in opposition? Mr. Perez, I see Mr. Perez is.
Minor, go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Minor Perez here presenting the carpet resiliency, would like to call and represent support of this project.
Thank you.
I have no additional reasons.
Excellent. Thank you. May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to perform a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
I have a second.
Thank you. Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken, recuse himself, chair says yes, motion carries.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the 9:30 hearings. First case is BOA 1393355, address is 304 Parrish Street, East Boston. The violation is Article 32, Section 4, G-Cod applicability, Article 27T-5, East Boston I-Cod applicability, Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking loading requirements, Article 53, Section 9, dimensional regulations, Article 53, Section 9, dimensional, oh, sorry, first is lot size, second is additional lot area per unit, another Articles 53, Section 9, dimensional, excessive FAR, Article 53, Section 9, dimensional, maximum number of stories exceeded, Article 53, Section 9, dimensional, insufficient open space per unit, Article 53, Section 9, dimensional, insufficient rear yard setback, Article 53, Section 9, dimensional regulations, side yard, and Article 53, Section 9, dimensional regulations, applicable in a residential sub-district, building height excessive. This is to raise an existing structure and erect a three-unit residential dwelling with a private roof deck. The applicants here, please announce yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and Happy New Year, and three to the members of the board, welcome. Look forward to working with the new board. My name is Richard Lins with a business address of 245 Sumner Street in East Boston. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, this, as the secretary indicated, is a proposal to erect a new three-story, three-family dwelling located at 304 Parrish Street. I do have some old reviews, photos of the site. As we're looking here, we can see the surrounding context and neighborhood of various multifamily dwellings. On the right side of the screen, you do see the Sacred Heart Church. The church is the current owner of the site. Our client is the proposed developer and proponent of the project. If we could jump to the next slide, just to give ourselves a little bit more surrounding context. This is a bird's eye view showing the relative relationship of the surrounding context of buildings existing both in the Bennington Street and Parrish Street neighborhood. Our site is currently a single-story garage, which is in very poor condition. It is not used for parking. It is simply just a structure that exists on the site with a curb cut that would be in connection with this project, closed to allow for on-street parking. If you could advance to the next slide, please. This is a street view as we're looking up Parrish Street towards Bennington Street and Day Square. To the right side, we do see the property that is owned by the church. The left side is the garage showing the location of the site. Next slide, please. This is just a different view looking down the street towards, heading towards Central Square. Again, our site would be located on the right-hand side. Next slide, please. I've provided the board with some context photos of recent projects and development in the immediate vicinity. These are buildings that have been approved most recently in the area of Parrish Street, Parrish Street, and Bennington Street, just to provide the board a sense of what the type of projects that have been built most recently in the immediate vicinity. Next slide, please. This is a proposed rendering of our project. We do propose this at four stories. As indicated in the information that was provided by the secretary, this is proposed to be a three-unit dwelling. So although we do show this is four stories with two lower levels, will be single-bedroom units that will provide a relatively more affordable homeownership opportunity for the neighborhood. The upper two levels are a bi-level unit, two-bedroom unit, roughly around 1,200 square feet. And one of the reasons that we have proposed to construct it this way is to provide a little bit of a varying in size of units, so that there wouldn't all be single-bedroom units, at least be able to provide a larger unit on the upper level. You do see the roof deck that is included, that would be a privately accessed roof deck. Through the community process, we worked with neighbors to eliminate any access to that roof deck via a headhouse, so that will simply be a roof deck that's accessed by an internal stairwell and a hatch. Next slide, please. So this is just the BPDA abstract showing the relative size of lots. As you can see, this lot is very consistent with the size of lots surrounding it and with, and generally with the depth. As you can see, most of the structures in the immediate vicinity do occupy a good portion of the lot. I do understand the BPDA's recommendation of respect to this proposal. However, we work very closely with direct abutters, some who I believe are on the call today, and I know we did provide the board with at least a dozen letters of support from direct abutters based upon this project and how we've adjusted it. Next slide, please. So our proposed site plan shows how our building will sit on the site. You can see the overlay of our building on the existing building. The existing building that sits on the site actually does not have any rear yard setback. This project would actually improve that condition. We would be setting our building back a little over five feet from the rear property line. The current setback is at about zero currently for the building that's there. We would maintain the setback on the left side of the building at 3.1 and maintain about a little over a foot setback on the right, which is consistent with the existing structure now. Our building would be brought to the front of the lot line, which would be consistent with the mold setback along that section of Parrish Street. By way of relief for dimensional regulations under Article 53, which are applicable to East Boston, this is considered a shallow lot. Although the zoning code does require a 30-foot setback for most projects, that amount of setback is actually reduced for shallow lots. Any lot that is under 100 feet in depth is permitted to reduce that setback down to at least, to no less than 10 feet. However, based upon the size of the lot, we are proposing a setback of 5.2 feet and requesting a variance. Again, this would be an improved condition from what currently exists. With respect to the side yard setback, the left side is compliant as it does exceed 2.5 feet, which is the minimum requirement. However, we would be requesting the variance on the right side, but once again, that is consistent with the current setback of the structure, so we'd be creating no additional nonconformity with respect to the right side setback. Next slide, please. Just a view of the existing condition with a garage currently sits on the lot, as I said, very close to the rear property line, and you can see the existing curb cut that does allow access to the site. There is no parking on the site now, so this driveway actually is taking up public parking spaces at the location. Next slide, please. You can jump to the next slide. Just our architectural site plan, next slide, please. Showing our floor layouts, so starting from the left side, we do have units one and two, generally about the same size with the bedroom, single bedroom located to the rear living area, bathroom, kitchen. We do have the internal stairwell that brings us up to unit three. Unit three is accessed and entered from the third level with an internal stairwell allowing access to additional living area at the fourth level with that internal stairwell for the roof deck. As I indicated, this is a proposed three-family dwelling. This is a 3F 2000 district, Madam Chair, which isn't allowed use. There is no variance that is necessary for this proposed use. Next slide, please. Just our section plan, next slide. And our elevation plan. So our building does sit at 42 feet to the top of the roof. The zoning code does not count the roof deck itself for purposes of height and measuring height. We do not propose any headhouse with respect to this proposed roof deck. This is slightly above the height limit that is currently allowed in the East Boston neighborhood district for this neighborhood, which is 35 feet. However, there are ongoing conversations with respect to planning Spasta as to increases in height throughout most of the neighborhood. Next slide, please. Just a different view of our front and left side elevation. Next slide, please. And we do have our information, I don't know how the chair wants to deal with it. This is also subject to G-Cod. Typically, as I'm sure the chair is aware, the board usually addresses the G-Cod banners first, and then will address the issues regarding the zoning presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Better Barazza, any, have you had a chance to review the plans?
Madam Chair, I have reviewed the plans, and the plans are adequate.
Thank you. So, Mr. Lins, I think we're gonna address the application together, the G-Cod and the and the application, thank you. Are there any other questions? Is this rentals or condos?
At this time, the community has asked us through the community process, Madam Chair, if we would consider homeownership opportunity. As I indicated, because we are proposing several one-bedrooms, this does provide, these are not IDP-type units, but they do provide a relatively more affordable type of unit for new construction in the neighborhood. A lot of the units that are being built are two-plus bedrooms, a one-bedroom unit. Inventory is relatively low with respect to ownership, so we do intend to have these as condominiums with the management company managing the operations.
Thank you.
Yeah, and just to, and just to give some feedback, within the context, along that street on Parrish, you usually have two stories to three stories maximum, you don't really see four stories. And at the rear of the property, you're starting to get some triple-deckers, but you don't really see four-story structures along the context, and most of the buildings are aligned to the public sidewalk, so you don't really see any kind of front setbacks, just giving context to the board members. And I would love to hear from Jeff Hampton from the BPDA, because they did provide some feedback.
Jeff, are you on?
I am, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we recommended denial without prejudice, as Ms. Better Barazza had mentioned. We thought that the building was too tall, and we actually were looking for a little bit of a setback, and I heard from counselor today that there was a five-foot setback, I believe, a modal, which I think would satisfy our concern, but our concern is still the four-story building in that area.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, this is David Aiken. I have a question for Attorney Lins. Good morning, Mr. Lins. There's a comment in the Maverick Square, first to members of the board, there's about eight or so unique letters of support, some generic, about 10 generic letters of support, and one letter in opposition. Just for context, the letter from the Maverick Square Neighborhood Association indicates support, but also asks about having a parking agreement with the church across the street. Can you speak to that at all?
Yeah, so because this site is currently owned by the Archdiocese of Boston, we have put an agreement together that should we receive approvals, we would have access to their parking lot, which I think accommodates about, I think it's about 50 to 60 vehicles to allow for off-street parking for up to three vehicles. That would be associated with our condominium documents. That would be associated with our condominium documents, and we would coordinate that upon completion of construction.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? If not, let's, let's take public testimony. May I hear from those closest to the project, in support of the project, public officials, elected officials, if they are present? I see Sebastian Pira.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Sebastian Pira. I am the East Boston Liaison for Councilor Gabriel Alcoleda. At the moment, I would like to go on record and show in the support of the council for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Newman?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Maverick Services.
Mr. Newman, yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Maverick Services.
There's an echo there, it sounds like. And we'd like to go on our, at this time, defer to the.
Jessica, are you able to fix that, Jessica?
Jessica, are you able to fix that, Jessica?
Do you guys hear it? Oh, my, coming in and out for me.
Yeah. Yeah, so at this time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board.
We'd like to defer to the judgment of the board.
Sorry, everyone has to hear me twice.
Sorry, everyone has to hear me twice.
Letters we ate on Parrish 31st. No butters were in attendance. And the applicant, the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association, as Secretary Aiken mentioned, there were some concerns regarding parking, which the applicant pledged to form an agreement with the local Catholic church in the area to provide off-site parking for at least two years. Besides that, our office is unaware of any other concerns. With that, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, are there, is there anyone else to speak in support of the project?
Madam Chair, Christian Semenelli, Boston Groundwater Trust, just confirming receipt of both Gcod letters from.
Excellent, thank you.
Sebastian, go ahead.
Sebastian went already.
Oh, he's, okay, so I'll, I apologize. There's no additional raise hands at the moment.
Madam Chair, I do believe, we do have some people, some butters who were on the call. I did see them as attendees, so I'm not sure if they were able to raise their hand or not.
We, we raised again.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ed DeVoe. I am a butter at 61 Brook Street in East Boston and a former member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Let's say welcome, and I wish you all the best luck. I am calling in support of this project. As Attorney Lins mentioned, as this property currently sits, it's a two-car garage that serves very little public benefit. By approving this project, it allows for much-needed housing in that area. It is in very close proximity to the airport MBTA station, and I ask that you look favorably upon this application. Thank you, and again, best of luck to you.
Thank you. Are there any other raise hands, Jessica?
Yeah, we had Sean, he's in a big testimony. He's still there? Okay, Sean, go ahead.
I live at 331 Parrish Street. Just like the same.
What's your full name?
Sean Sartino.
Okay, thank you. And no additional raise hands at the moment.
Thank you. With that information, so we have two things to vote on. Tom, should I be voting on them separately?
Madam Chair, you can just call for one motion, although it's a full project.
Okay, great. So may I have a motion for both the Gcod and the project itself?
Hey, I'll put, I'll put a, I'll put a motion forward. I would like to make a motion of denial without prejudice, given that, for the reasons that I stated in regards to four-story not being in the context.
Second, that.
Okay, do I have, okay, roll call, Ms. Bederbaraza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepard?
Due to BPDA's recommendation, yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
I'd like to just know, I do think this is a great site for more density, but I do have an issue with the fourth story, so I, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
No.
Ms., myself, Chair also votes no. I don't know if the motion carries. Where does the motion carry, Tom?
Those five votes in favor of the denial without prejudice, so the motion doesn't carry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, good luck. Next case.
Okay, the next case is BOA 1385988. Address is 817 East Broadway. This is to construct a four-story addition to the rear of the property with new rear stairs for egress, eliminating the connecting balconies and allowing 817 and 819 East Broadway to share a new stair-to-grade. The violations, Article 68, Section 29, roof structure restrictions, and Article 68, Section 8, dimensional regulations applicable to the residential sub-district of insufficient side yard setback. Name and address of the applicant for record, please.
Is the applicant on?
The applicant.
The applicant, can you raise your hand? Or unmute yourself?
Mr. Aharn, is there Mr. Aharn on?
Aharn.
Jessica, do you see him?
I do not, no.
Okay. Shall we move on to the next case and come back to this?
Yeah, we can, we can set it aside and see if they come back later.
Thank you. So calling, do I, Tom, do I need to make a motion on that?
Madam Chair, whenever the board makes its final decision, we can do a motion for now. Just set it aside. If they don't show up, the board will usually.
Okay. Thank you. And Tom, would this be the appropriate time to recuse myself? Or shall I wait until David calls this into the record?
You can put it on the record and then recuse yourself, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Next case is BOA 1365467. Address is 100 Allstate Road. This is to construct a new five-story mixed-use building on the ground level. We have 10-vehicle at-grade parking garage. On the second floor will be commercial office use. On floors three through five will be nine residential units. The violations are as follows. Article 65, Section 15, use accessory parking is conditional. Article 65, Section 15, use multifamily dwelling is conditional. Article 65, Section 16, dimensional FAR is excessive. Article 65, Section 16, dimensional building height excessive. Article 65, Section 16, dimensional rear yard insufficient. Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking and loading. Off-street parking is insufficient. Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking and loading. Off-street loading is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
So let, I'm going to recuse myself and turn it over to Ms. Bederbaraza to chair this one.
Okay, if you're on for this case, can you raise your hand?
Can we hear from the applicant?
I see their counsel is on.
Yeah, I know Nick Suzula is their attorney, Ms. Bederbaraza.
And this is just a reminder that we're now a six-member board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sorry about that. I, Ms. Bederbaraza, I have, of course, right when we get called, I have mic issues. I apologize for that. Thank you, Acting Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair as well. Welcome, new board. Attorney Nick Suzula, McDermott Quilty &amp; Miller. Sorry about that technical difficulty. With me today is Adam Sarbaugh, who's the property owner and developer, as well as architect Tim Johnson. Madam Ambassador, we do have a presentation, but I'm not going to go slide by slide. It is a long day. If you'd like to scroll through, specifically the first slide is probably a helpful slide right now. And then Ms. Bederbaraza, no, the next slide, I apologize, the next slide, the second slide. Yes, thank you. And Ms. Bederbaraza, of course, we can go back to any slides. And if you'd like us to highlight anything, we can do that.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful to just contextualize the proposal in regards to what unique conditions are there while you're seeking the variance in regards to hardship? And just, are there any affordable units in the proposal?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. So you can see here, the site is located, it's in Dorchester. It's right near South Bay. It's on the corner of Allstate Road and Willow Court. It's directly across from the South Bay Shopping Center, and it's adjacent to Mass Ave. The site is about 5,170 square feet. It's located in the Community Commercial Sub-District of the Dorchester Neighborhood District. Currently, the site is vastly underutilized. It's an abandoned, vacant, dilapidated, whatever adjective you would like to use, unsightly. It's a two-family structure and a junkyard kind of vehicular parking area on a very visible corner on the way into the South Bay Shopping Center. It's adjacent and nearby to several newly constructed and approved four and five-story residential buildings. And what we're proposing, as was right into the record, is a new five-story mixed-use building. You can go to the next slide, Madam Ambassador. You can see the proposal here. What's being proposed is a new five-story building. It's approximately 16,000 square feet of gross floor area. So it is, does not cross the threshold of Article 80 Small Project Review. We are proposing at-grade vehicular parking for 10 spaces. And those spaces would be using a long-existing curb cut along Allstate Road for access. So all-access deliveries, the front door, et cetera, would be from Allstate Road. There is an existing curb cut as well on Willow Court, but that will be closed up and will not be utilized for the project. There is ground floor commercial office space, I'm sorry, second floor office space. And then the upper three units, upper three floors are all three units each. Nine residential units, three on each floor. They're all two-bedroom, two-bath units between 1,100 square feet and 1,300 square feet. So they're ampli-sized two-bedroom units. The commercial space is about 3,700 square feet. You can see here as well, this is a great slide, because you can see the open spaces, there is some open space along the edges, but each unit will have their own balconies and open space off the building as well. Finally, you know, we did engage in, and I will answer the questions, Madam Chair. I just wanted to put this in as well. We did engage in a pretty robust community outreach process. We did meet with the butters on September 22nd. We had our official mayor's office of butter meeting on October 24th. We met with the McCormick Civic folks in November, and that resulted in them providing a letter of support to the board a few days ago. And we've also received letters of support from many butters and nearby neighbors. We provided those to the board and also provided a map on the last page of the presentation that shows where those letters are from.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Secretary Aiken, do we have those letters of support on record?
Yes, we do. We have a vote from the John McCormick Civic Association, and we also have a package of, of generic letters of support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize for jumping ahead on that. So, you know, as far as the hardship's concerned, this is, you know, we are asking for some variances. The use is conditional on the upper floors, but there is a host of residential units and residential development in and around this area, kind of this pocket of newly transformed residential area right off of South Bay. We do need floor area ratio and building height. We need those because we are proposing to have ground floor parking. We're unable because of grade and because of the size of the lot in order to have below-grade parking, in order to have the proper slope down to the parking area. We don't have that, that, that running width and length to get down there. So we need to provide parking, and we're looking to provide parking on the ground floor. And that's part of the reason why we need relief for most of what we're, we're asking for. So there's a little bit of a hardship.
And correct me, correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm also reviewing the drawings for, for my colleagues here. The FAR required is two, but you're proposing 3.1, and the height restriction in the district is 45 feet. But you're proposing 53. And for the members to know, this is a conditional use, the multifamily, and the commercial office isn't allowed use.
Yes, yes, ma'am. I can, if you'd like me to confirm, right, I agree. So that, you know, again, the FAR is excessive, but it is in line with many of the buildings in the immediate area. The proposed height is about eight feet over the building height allowable. However, you know, we would suggest that that's contextually appropriate with most of the new, newly-built buildings in this area, as well as the approved buildings that are actually, some of them are six stories behind us. And you'll see, actually on slide, I think it's 21 or 22, Madam Ambassador, we do have some height contextual, just to show. Oh, that's a slide if you go back up. So this is our nearest across Willow, it's 85 Willow. We are a few feet above them, but we, we are in line with their height. We're not a full story above them. And again, you know, we would suggest that part of that reason is in order to provide garage parking at-grade because of the kind of size of the lot and how it's situated. And then if you go, Madam Ambassador, if you scroll down slowly through the next few slides, we've also done a, you know, a fake shadow study just to show that the shadows from this building actually should not and will not fall over Willow. It should fall over Allstate, which is the line of the lowest road that runs to and from and into South Bay. And if you go down further, Madam Ambassador, you'll see that we've progressed these slides as you would go through. And you can see the arrow from on the right-hand side behind our building, which shows, I believe, the sun and where the shadows would be casting. If you go down a few more, Madam Ambassador, it's just a series of them to show the, the shadow studies. And as far as, I think you asked, Ms. Bederbaraza, as to affordability. This is a, yeah, so this is a nine-unit building. The, under the, you know, this, this was filed, I believe, back in 2020. So it was, it predates any proposed or, or, you know, currently discussed changes to the Affordable Housing Program that are, you know, currently being rolled out by, by the mayor. And I also would just note that the same developer has, has gotten an approved project further into the kind of quote-unquote neighborhood as you move into and off of Allstate for 99-unit homeownership project that will have 26 IDP units in that project. So although we don't have to propose any or need any affordable units in this development, we are contributing, or the developer is contributing a, a large amount of affordable homeownership units in the neighborhood. And that has already been approved by the BPDA and this board, and they're applying for their building permit now. So this is a rental building, but I just, I think for the full picture, this developer has committed to the neighborhood with 99 of homeownership units, of which 25% of them will be affordable. And that's literally a stone's throw up Willow Court. So I just wanted to give the full context. Thank you.
I think, I think that was sufficient. I would like to hear from Jeff Hampton at BPDA. Do you have an opinion on this proposal?
Thank you, Ms. Bederbaraza. You don't have a formal one on paper, but I do want to go on record as supporting this project approval with design review. There was some questioning at the time when our board was meeting, whether or not this was meeting the threshold for Article 80. And it wasn't determined until after our board had met. So we didn't have a formal vote for you, but I would like to go on record in support of this with the proviso of design review.
Great, thank you. And are there any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Langson.
Yeah, a question. I would, I would like to know how do the neighborhood feel about this project?
We're going to hear from them directly, and we can hear from the mayor liaison's neighborhood as well.
Thank you.
Madam, oh, sorry. I have a couple of questions, if the time is appropriate.
Now is, yes.
Okay. Mr. Suzula, is, what is the parking, how is the parking assigned? Is it to residential units or the commercial?
That's a great question, Mr., Ms. Weewell. I think the plan as now is to have one, there's 10 spaces. And I think the plan is to have one of, each unit would be able to have a space, so one per unit. And then the extra space would go towards somebody in the office. This is, you know, a fairly, you know, I think this word gets thrown around quite a bit as, you know, as Ms. Bederbaraza will, will remember from previous hearings. You know, we do need parking relief, but, you know, this is walkable to South Bay. All the amenities in South Bay, it's, it's the 8 and 16 buses, I believe, are on Mass Ave. New Market Commuter Rail is literally a third of a mile away. And Andrews Station is, you know, a decent walk, but it's walkable at 3/4 of a mile. So we fit as much parking as we could. And the idea, I think, Ms. Weewell, is to have one space per residential unit and allocate one of the spaces to the commercial space. The commercial space, if I didn't mention. The commercial space, if I didn't mention, is about 3,700 square feet. So there would be a few, there would be some employees who would obviously be working there, but the developer would work with them to, you know, to work on, you know, kind of TOD measures to make sure, and obviously, they will understand that they will not have, you know, more than one parking space for the office.
Okay, thank you. I have another question. I did see on the plans, the trash is right next to the bikes, so I would, you know, suggest this isn't something I would, you know, oppose this project for, but I think if you want to make it desirable for people to bike, maybe give them a better place for their bikes. I'm not sure if that next to the trash is appropriate, but I know that's an internal thing, and that can be addressed later on probably if approved.
Yes, ma'am. That's a fair, that's a fair question. We can look at that, and that's something that we can discuss with BPDA and tweak that to make that more appropriate. Thank you.
That's all my questions.
Can I add, can I add to that one, Nick?
Yes, Adam. So Adam Sarbaugh, he's the proposed developer. Sorry, Ms. Weewell.
Yeah, Ms. Weewell, we, so in those, after we had filed it through the community process, that was something that we had discussed, and if you're looking at this slide right here, you see right to the right of the garage, you know, with some bricks, and we had discussed through the community process with our neighbors in both the ONX meeting and community meetings that during BPDA design review that we might move that trash down below, and they might formalize, and we might get a better use of that bike, that bike space. So it was discussed and talked about, and I do agree with you on that.
Thank you. That's all my questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Are there any further questions from our board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, David Aiken, just building upon the last comment that Ms. Weewell stated, I would, I think that addressing a better bicycle storage there and relocating the trash is important to close access to the red line, to the commuter rail, and other areas, and it did look to me like there was sort of space there for bicycle storage, especially with all two-bedroom units, so.
Thank you, Mr. Aiken. We will look at that, Ms. Better Barazza, Mr. Aiken, we can, we'll continue to study that and work on that with the BPDA. Thank you.
Any further questions from the board?
Yes, I have a question from Mr. Zizula. So this project is not providing any affordable housing, affordable housing, and you mentioned that the developer is providing affordable housing somewhere else in the neighborhood. Every project is unique, and I don't think that that means that all projects can supply community benefits that this project could be supplying. So my question is about the commercial space. Is this commercial space providing any linkage contribution?
No, Mr. Valencia. Again, this is, this is below, it's 16,000 square feet, it's below Article 80 Large Project Review, which is 50,000 square feet, it's below Article 80 Small Project Review, which is 20,000 square feet of gross floor area. So there would be no linkage fees as a result. We're well below those thresholds. From the affordability perspective, I understand your point. Again, you know, under current iterations of the IDP, we're not required to do any affordability. It was just, my point was just to contextualize the developer as a whole, but I understand your point specifically for this project, but we're, I guess my answer would be, we're just not required to do so at this time, but we've hoped that we've, you know, had those discussions with the community directly in this neighborhood in McCormick and the folks in Dorchester that we've provided affordability in the neighborhood elsewhere, and that's why we're not proposing any with this project. But I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zizula. Thank you.
Okay, I think we've heard from our board. Is anyone here to speak in either support or in opposition of this project? Let's start with elected officials, then representative of elected officials, and then we hear from the community.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of the board. I have some background information on the community process. As you've heard, our office held a Butters meeting on October 24th. There were some concerns raised in that meeting regarding the proposed height, as well as concerns related to trash being maintained in the property and parking, as well as the maneuverability on the street. It sounds like the applicant has continued to work with some of those Butters. They went on to McCormick Civic Association and received their full support. With that, we defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, welcome. New members of the board, I'm Joe McEckren with City Council Frank Baker's office. Would like to go on record in support of the project today.
Thank you.
Thomas, go ahead.
Hillary Dillon from Senator Collins' office would like to go on record in support of this project. Thank you.
Good morning. Tom, good morning. Taking behalf of Councilor Murphy. Councilor Murphy would like to go on record for supporting this project. We were on the community meetings, and this project has the support of the McCormick Civic, as well as the support of the Butters, so we would like to go on record in support of this. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Chris represent the Carpenter's Union. Would like to go in strong support of this project.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council Lieutenant Michael Flaherty, Councilor go on record in support.
Ben Murphy, can we state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Ben Murphy with the New Market Business Improvement District located at 100 Magazine Street. We represent over 700 property owners, businesses, and residents in the area around the proposed project. I'd like to go on, go on the record in support of the project. The developer is an excellent and communicative neighbor, has done everything we've asked him to in terms of meeting with the community, being responsive to feedback, and we think that this project will be a benefit for the neighborhood.
Travis, go ahead.
Hi, Travis Stewart from McCormick Civic Association. We are fully in support of the project, and I will say the same thing that the previous person said, like Adam and his group has always been very supportive of changing things and listening to us out, so we are definitely in support of the project.
Thank you. Leif Mitchell, go ahead.
Yes, my name is Leif Mitchell, and I'm with 8 Baker Court. We're just one building away from 100 Allstate. Condo Association has had strong, positive communication with the developer. He's been open to any suggestions. It's been a real collaborative process. We're excited to see some changes to the neighborhood. We've been living in this neighborhood since 2016, have been waiting for some of these changes to happen to the buildings nearby. We have no issue with the height. We think the parking is adequate. Looking forward to the project moving forward.
Thank you. No additional questions.
Great. Can we hear from the community or director Butters, if they are present?
That was everyone.
That was everyone?
Yes.
Okay, great. So can I please entertain a motion?
Motion for approval.
Can I hear approval with any proviso, like BPDA design review?
Yeah, motion with approval for proviso of BPDA design review.
Great, can I hear a second?
A second.
Okay. I'm going to do a roll call. Can I hear from Brahim Shepherd?
Yes.
Gerani Valencia?
Yes.
Katie Weewell?
Yes.
Alan Langham?
Yes.
David Aiken?
Yes, but I'd like the design proviso to be also more specific to the bicycle trash.
Okay, so what we'll do, for myself, I'm going to be in opposition. So the motion does carry, and we will have it with BPDA design review paying special attention to bike storage and trash, and also the, that's it, thank you.
Thank you all. We appreciate your time. Good luck today. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Better Barazza.
Madam Chair, can I just quickly note, if you're in the attendee section right now and you're presenting a case, or if you're part of an event at the patrol's office, and you're in the attendee section, please raise your hand in the chat. Just want to make sure people are in the right place as we move forward with the cases. Thank you.
Okay, the next case is BOA 1376022. Address is 210 West Springfield Street. This is the addition of a rear deck on second floor and the addition of a roof deck private to the top-floor unit, tiered access only for unit two. This is violations Article 32, Section 4, G-COT applicability. Any extension of any structure which will occupy more than 50 square feet of lot area in a G-COT. Article 64, Section 9, townhouse, rowhouse extensions in the rear yard, and Article 64, Section 34, restricted roof structure regulations. Then in the south-end neighborhood district, no roof structure designed or used for human occupancy. If the applicant would announce their name and address for the record.
Good morning, members of the board. Greg McCarthy for 210 West Springfield Street.
Thank you. If you could focus on the most relevant slides and just the new violations and just put us in context, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure. So the first one is groundwater conservation, which we have gotten the no-harm letter, the letter approval from the BWSC for the violations on the building. The first one is extension into the rear yard. That is for the proposed rear deck. So if we go down a couple more slides here, I can stop you when we get there. Right here is the initial one, so any extension to the rear yard in this district is a violation. So what we're proposing is within the setbacks, but any, any extension would be a violation. So we're proposing seven, seven-foot-deep decks, so they come about seven feet off the building, and they're still about 27 and 1/2 feet from the rear lot line. So that would be first and second floor decks. The second violation is the roof structure restriction. If you want to go up, I think one more page should get us there. The top unit, this is a two-unit building, the top floor is a three-level unit. That would have a private, we're proposing to put a private roof deck up there for that unit. Of the 12, sorry, 20 rowhouses on the street, I think 12 of them have roof decks. It's pretty common on this side of the street. We were unable to do a conforming roof deck because the building's 49 feet high, so we're unable to do a bubble hatch because it was not to building code. So we're proposing to add a staircase headhouse for access to the roof deck. And if you scroll down a little bit more, it can kind of show the elevations on the rear here. So the building is only around 40 feet on the front, but because of the grade in the rear, that's up being 49 at the top, and the headhouse is going to be about 6 feet. From the elevation, you can, you know, the architect gives the full scope of the building in the image, but you won't be able to see any of this from West Springfield Street. You can't see any of the roof decks from the street. I think that's the overall picture of it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Ms. Better Barazza, have you reviewed the plans? Do you have any questions?
I don't necessarily have any plan, any questions. It's pretty adequate. You know, my only kind of hesitation is the headhouse typically in a district like this, we prefer to see roof hatches versus penthouse. That would be my only comment. And then in terms of also the ways in which the rear deck is supported, typically they're recommended to be self-supported, forum brackets, and I can, I would love to hear Jeff Hampton's opinion from the BPDA as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Ms. Better Barazza. Yes, typically, we would also agree with you that instead of a headhouse, we would recommend a hatch entrance for the roof deck. And as far as the bracket-supported rear decks in the south end, we typically approve six-foot, not seven-foot decks. So our concern, it's not even a concern, our vote rather is approval with provisos that the entrance to a roof deck be by hatch and that the rear decks be bracket-supported in no bigger than six feet. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Can I respond to that just real quickly? The six feet on the deck, absolutely, this is, somebody had mentioned that at the neighborhood meeting, and we're definitely meant to change that. But the reason that we don't have a bubble hatch here is because it was a violation of the building code.
Can I respond to that, Ms. Barazza?
Yes, please.
So for the members that are new, I understand that, and you have the ability to apply for building code relief. Ms. Better Barazza, please correct me if I'm out of line here, but this board has looked favorably upon building code relief for a hatch rather than approve a headhouse.
Yes.
Correct, and we would put that in the motion.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from members of the board?
Madam Chair, this is Tom.
Yes.
On the building code issue, if the board does require proviso for hatch access, it would have to come back to the board for a building code vote, when they would get issued a violation from ISD for violating the building code, and it would return to the board. But yeah, they are corrected on buildings that are over four stories and buildings that require a penthouse access to the roof rather than a hatch access at all.
Got it, understood. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I have a point of information. I just have a question for Mr. Broom, if it's appropriate.
Yes, Ms. Weewell.
Yes, please.
When is the appropriate time to sort of give the justification you need for a denial decision or an approval decision? Is that during the roll call or before the public comment?
It depends on when you get a chance to speak, Ms. Weewell, but if you wanted to offer your reasons in support or in opposition to a motion when you're, when you're making your vote, I think that would make it clear to everyone what you're doing, and that would let you hear all the information beforehand.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That's my only question, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, may I hear a public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Chris Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Sorry, I'm not sure if there's an echo there. Our office held in the Butters meeting in September. There were no concerns raised from the Butters. The applicant went on to meet with the local civic association, which is the Claremont Neighborhood Association. I'm unaware of any concerns being raised by them either at this time. I defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Semenelli?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Chris Semenelli, Boston Row and Trust, and we have both of us from the applicant.
Thank you very much. Are there any other raised hands? Okay, hearing none. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion with three provisos. One is with BPDA design review ensuring that the rear deck is pulled to six feet. The second being that the deck connections be self-supported or bracket-supported, and the last one would be to provide an internal roof hatch access to the roof deck as opposed to a headhouse.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Better Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Next case?
Madam Chair, we have Michael Ahern for 817 East Broadway, which we skipped over on the line. Would you like to go back to cover that case now?
Mr. Broom, do we normally proceed, or is it okay to go back?
Oh, we can go back.
Okay, yes, please. Thank you, please.
Okay, this is second. BOA 1385988, this is 817 East Broadway. This is constructive four-story addition to the rear of the property with new rear stairs for egress, eliminating the connecting balconies, allowing 817 and 819 East Broadway to share a new stair to grade. The violations are Article 68, Section 29 roof structure restrictions, and Article 68, Section 8 dimensional regulations, insufficient side yard setback. Mr. Ahern or someone else, please announce yourself for the record.
This is Michael Ahern.
Thank you. If you could please focus on the slides that would be most relevant to us, as well as any of the violations, new violations from this.
Yes, I can. So that's a plot plan that you have on the screen right now, and that shows the proposed addition in the green outline, the larger box in the rear of the building, and it shows the, this existing bucket, it shows reworking that bucket to make it come out to the full extent of the addition below the deck.
make it come out to the full extent of the addition below the deck for egress. There is no, there is no violations on this page. The violations we had discussed are the, the roof structure violation. And there's set back, side set back violation, which if you go to the, believe the next slide, sorry, it should be proposed elevation. So right here, we're looking at the addition on A10. We're looking at the addition on the rear of the property. It's a purple box with a black outline. The rear deck, the side block setback violation is the side deck where the stairs are. That right now is a connected balcony serving, I believe, nine units total. And what we're proposing is put a stair to grade so that the stairs will go to grade, giving a more effective passage in the event of any kind of emergency. So that's the sidewalk setback. The roof structure setback would be the third floor plant in the extension of the existing roof, which would extend out over the addition only, not over the deck. There is no, they are a violation. There is no other violation. Those are the only two that are, that we are here to discuss.
Thank you. Ms. Bede Barazza, have you reviewed the plans?
Madam Chair, the plans are adequate. I just have two questions. One is, what is your rear yard setback from your proposed deck? And will your rear deck still be providing access for the egress balcony that you share with the adjacent building?
Yes. So if you go back to the plot plan, whereabouts, I don't have that number in front of me and I don't want you to blow that up, but I believe whereabouts 60 feet from the rear?
60 feet. Okay.
Yeah, the required is 20. So we're about 60 feet from the rear. And the rear deck will be part of the egress as well.
Great. Thank you. No, no further questions.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from members of the board? Hearing none, I will take a public testimony.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Anna White with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. ONS held in a Butters meeting for 817 East Broadway on October 18th, 2022. Close to 10 directed Butters attended the meeting. The proponent answered all questions raised by Butters and the meeting was generally positive. People are happy with the progress footprint and with the improvements that will be made to exterior lighting and security. We have no letters in opposition to this proposal. At this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. White.
The speaker is the board.
Ms. Wang from Council Flynn's office?
Good morning, everyone. Madam Chair, members of the board. Council President Flynn would let it go in Barker in support based on feedback on community and Butters support. Also is our understanding that the city point, neighborhood association voted for this case to proceed to ZBA through the Butters support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council of Lott, Michael Flaherty, echoing the sentiments of Council Flynn's office, Council President Flynn's office, as well as acknowledging the communal efforts that went into drafting Article 68, the council has to go and recognize the support of this project.
Thank you. Any other public officials or representatives of public officials? Okay, I will take testimony from a Butters. Mr. Fitzgerald, are you in a Butters? Can you state your name and address for the record?
Here, I'm Hugo Fitzgerald. I live at 782 East Fourth Street. This is almost directly behind the property. There's been ongoing issues with this passageway for the past two and a half years. The passageway is not up to current fire code. Your tax office has confirmed that it is neither described as a private or public laneway. However, the zoning has confirmed that the plot lines do go to the back of 782, excuse me, to the back of the laneway, which goes onto Fourth Street. The laneway has been under failing conditions for a number of years. It has been reviewed by the Boston Fire Department as it is considered an emergency laneway and it is not adequately wide enough at this point in time. The additions at both 817 and 819 do not permit emergency vehicles to turn around properly. The additions of the deck and also the extension of the homes do not allow for 25 feet of emergency vehicles to turn at this point in time. And I'm asking for a denial until further review by the Boston Fire Department. Addition, the laneway itself is under deterioration. It cannot support ongoing public service vehicles, including emergency vehicles as well as standard complete garbage vehicles.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Mr. Ahern, do you wish to?
Hi, my name is Paul McCormick. I am in a Butters. I live at 819 East Broadway. So I would just like to, I'm in opposition to the staircase idea that he has in his plans. We actually brought this up at the Butters meeting and I, I was under the impression that he was in agreement that he wouldn't be building stairs because of the cost of them. He indicated that the city is going to make him put in sprinklers or something and therefore he wasn't even going to do stairs. So he, he would probably just stick with the Juliet balconies. So myself, as well as other unit owners in the building, I have security concerns about having, and these are all rentals, by the way, and having people coming in and out, access to the street and, you know, to our units is a big change for us. And I'm in opposition to that particular part of the project. And just, just for the...
Are there any other, are there any other Butters to speak in support or opposition? Thank you. Does the board have any questions? Mr. Ahern, do you want to address that before we take a vote?
So, so as far as the staircase with the Butters, they don't have to participate in the connected balconies as they're connected on their right inside the building. I would like to follow through my staircase for my property, but they don't have to participate in the connection between the two buildings. So that can be eliminated. They're not required to have an egress. I am required to have an egress. I don't share an egress with my Butters to the left. So the only, the only egress I have is to the immediate right unless I go to grade. So I'd like to continue with the stairs to grade and I will not connect to their balconies. So there'll be a separation of six feet.
Madam Chair, can we hear also BPDA's recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Hampton.
Can I finish my rebuttal?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry. So the, as far as the laneway, this is the first I'm hearing of the laneway, but I have 65 feet from the, from the back of the property to the addition. So I'm more than adequate the 25 feet that's required, 20 feet that's required in the zoning for the rear property line. I'm not aware of the laneway conditions, but I'm not the sole proprietor of the laneway. From what I understand, it's everyone that abuts the laneway has the right to the laneway. So I can't comment on that.
Thank you, Mr. Ahern. We'll hear from Mr. Hampton, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our recommendation for this was just a simple approval with design review on this. We didn't have any other concerns about that. But if there was something where the board feels like there, we need to take a look at something specific, we'd be more than happy to entertain that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or discussion from the board? If not, may I have, may I have a motion?
I say, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Oh, I thought I saw a hand up. I would like to put forward a motion. I would like to put forward a motion with two proviso. One is motion of approval with fire prevention review. And the second is with BPDA design review, paying special attention to the selection of the exterior material and a four story massing and openings to fit more with its context.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second that motion, Madam Chair, with the provisos.
Excellent. Thank you. Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, please.
Okay. Next case is BOA 1396276. The address is 78 Rutland Street in North Street. This is the change of occupancy. There's three single family permits. There's a change of occupancy from three family to single family. New windows on the front of the building, new main entry, rear decks, restore the bay window, two windows on the trustees pocket part, and emergency structural work at the bow front window on level three. The violations are Article 64 townhouse, rear row house extension into the rear with a note pending complete rebuilding code review upon submission of full construction documents. So that doesn't appear to be a violation. It's just listed as a note. Would the applicant please announce themselves and read their name and address for the record?
Thank you. Is the applicant for Sunday 8, Rutland Street on?
Can you raise your hand if you're up to this project?
Mr. Robzenski?
I don't see the applicant.
All right. Shall we move on to the next case?
The next case deferred earlier. That was BOA 136, 1351 and 1617 trademark. So we will move on to BOA 1344019. The address is 6 Moreland Street. This is convert basement currently used to storage to habitable space. Change occupancy from four to five units. The violations are Article 50, Section 29 additional lot area insufficient, Article 50, Section 29 floor area ratio excessive, Article 50, Section 29 usable open space insufficient, Article 50, Section 43 off street parking and loading requirement, off street parking is insufficient. Would the applicant please announce themselves and read their address in the record?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Scott Holmes and I'm an attorney here on behalf of Mr. Mullane, who is also with us. My address is 50 Main Street in Charlestown, Mass. 02129.
Thank you. If you can please focus on the relevant, most relevant slides and provide us with the context and violations, please.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be before everyone today. I truly appreciate this opportunity and welcome everybody who's new to the board. So this is really a project and a building that, if you'll give me a chance, this was, building was built in 1867 as history has provided for us. And Patrick required it in the 90s. It currently is a four unit building. The building is zoned for four to six residences. He'd been using the basement as storage, but is looking to change the occupancy on the bottom, on the ground floor from storage to a one bedroom. And there's many reasons why, but I just want to explain to the board what it's like for a small man or a small business owner like Patrick. These are not the big projects that come along where they have deep pockets. The money that would be gained from doing this or getting the relief that we seek, it would be money that he could infuse back into the building. With a building of 1867 origination and which has been on the books for a long time in the history of Boston, this money would be used to improve the common areas, would be used to improve the edifice and to provide greater security for the residents. There are currently two Section 8 tenants in the building. We're looking just to make this into a one bedroom. The idea really being is that it would provide housing in this beautiful area of Roxbury so that people could then, a young couple or a single person could then have a nice place to live. He's a very conscientious owner and this is not something that is a whim or a fancy. We've been going at this since 2021, actually, to try and make sure we could get to this point in time. As I said earlier, the basement is currently zoned for a living area and it was originally attached to the first floor. So you'd have the first floor, you'd come up the stairs and there'd be a first floor and beneath it, you could walk down to a second bedroom. This project would actually reduce the density because currently there are 10 bedrooms in this building. It would reduce it to nine if approved and there would be no additional living space that would be required. It's designed to be a one bedroom apartment and, you know, a sub, a sub ground floor or basement apartment is a great opportunity financially for somebody who is trying to get a leg up in this building. It's not going to be built up or built out. As I said, the funds would be there to improve the common areas and other components of the building. Couple other points and then I'll let Patrick speak real quickly. We did appear before three different organizations, I'm sorry, one of Butters meeting and two different organizations on August 16th. We were before the Roxbury path.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes?
Mr. Holmes, we will hear from ONS on the public process so we can focus on other things.
Okay, sure. The one thing I'm not sure of in the public process, I just want to say because I don't know that a letter was ever submitted, is that we appeared before Renee Mardonis, who is the Dudley Street Neighborhood Initiative, who only sent us an email saying that they approved the project because it is a small project and it didn't need to go through its board of directors. I'd like to tell you about the relief that we're seeking, obviously, and you'll hear from, or there's a letter on in opposition, the parking situation. This happens to be on the bus line. It's called the Bus Priority Corridor. This is about 100 feet at most from Warren Street, 6 Moreland. And there are five buses that operate on Warren Street that service anybody that lives in this area. And we understand that parking is an issue. I live in Charlestown. We all have issues with parking. But the idea is that this is such a small unit, the impact on the neighborhood would be de minimis and that with the corridor being such a prominent path for people getting, traveling. So that's one of the reliefs we need. As far as the FAR goes, it is current at 2.64. I'm assuming that is based upon what it was when the first person who owned this building applied to have residences there or made it into a four family. The relief sought would be 3.06. We've worked with the neighborhood to the extent that it was, it was available to us and are seeking this relief. And I'll let Patrick just address everyone for a minute, please.
Good morning. My name is Patrick Mullane. I'm the owner of 6 Moreland Streets. My address is 56 Chesa Haas in the Brighton neighborhood. Just to follow up on what Scott said, this basement level was permitted by the city of Boston back in 1988 in conjunction with the first floor unit to form a two, sorry, a four bedroom, two bath duplex, first floor and garden level. Over the past three years, I've had a personal need to use it as storage, which it currently is used for. And there's, there is a bathroom still down there in, it's in poor condition right now. With this proposal, if approved, would reduce the overall bedroom count on the building from 10 to nine and still have the five bathrooms it has now. So separating the first floor, which is currently used as a two bedroom, one bath, and the garden level being a one bed, one bath. As Scott mentioned, I do have two Section 8 tenants that have been at the property for north of a decade. And my hope, if approved, would be this lower level, creating another relatively affordable unit, just given that it is a one bedroom and it is a garden level. Property would have very minimal changes from the exterior. And I plan to use some of the rental income from this unit to reinvest in the common areas and the rear backyard of the property, which, you know, I would say currently are average condition.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton, may we hear from you?
Thank you, Madam. Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair. We recommended approval with provisos that there be no building code relief with this basement unit and that the applicant work with us to get as much natural light into that area as possible.
Thank you. Ms. Bede Barazza, have you reviewed the plans?
I have, and I have no further questions.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? May I hear a public testimony?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Keisha Santana from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this point, we would like to defer judgment to the board. And a Butters meeting was held on August 18th where there were no raised concerns from the residents. The owner met with Dudley Street Neighborhood Initiative where they showed support of the project, also met with Roxbury Path Forward. Again, we would like to defer judgment to the board.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in support? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition?
I don't raise my hand at the moment.
Thank you. With that, may I entertain a motion?
I do, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I just do want to point out that we have the one letter of opposition that was alluded to earlier.
Thank you.
And no letters of support.
Thank you. Thank you. May I have a motion?
I can make a motion with proviso, that plans be submitted to the VPDA for design review and consideration to natural light in the basement.
So a motion to support?
Mr. Valencia, if I can step in, because this is all internal renovations, we usually don't do design review on internal, but I would appreciate with the no building code relief maybe as a proviso?
Okay, so I make a motion to approve with proviso that they will be, is approved with no building code relief.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Beder Raza?
I oppose.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes, I think it's a great way to add a unit to the area, and I think the changes to the structure seem minimal, so yes.
Thank you. Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair also says yes, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you and good luck.
Be well, everyone.
I'm sorry?
Do we need to do the 10:30 deferrals?
Yes, Mr. Aiken, can you see if there's any 10:30 deferrals?
Yes, are there any, anyone for the hearings at 10:30 who want to defer or withdraw?
335 K Street?
Thank you, explain?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'll call it for the record. Case BOA 1306816, the address is 335 K Street. This has changed from a one-family lodging house to a three-family, will be renovated, additional floor added, which will increase the height of the building, a two-car garage will also be added to the building. Okay, please explain the need for deferral?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, business address of 168 H Street, South Boston. We are here requesting a withdrawal.
A withdrawal, all right, thank you. May I have a motion?
Yes, a motion, motion to approve, to deny without prejudice.
Motion, okay. May I have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Beder Raza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Thank you. Chair agrees, motion carries.
Are there any other withdrawals or deferrals for 10:30? Okay, we'll continue with the 9:30 case.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, never mind.
Okay, back to the 9:30 cases, case BOA 1406168, the address is 750 754A, Adams Street in Dorchester. This is a change of occupancy from a cafe to takeout to restaurant with takeout and live entertainment. Violations are Article 55, Section 65-41, off-street parking requires .3 spaces per seat, for proposed 83 seats and zero parking spaces. And Article 65, Section 15, use large restaurant over 2,500 square feet is a forbidden use. Would the applicant please announce themselves and read their address for the record?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Maranti, business address of 168 H Street, South Boston. Joining me today is the owner-applicant, Mr. David Aerosmith. The proposal in front of us today is a request for a conditional use permit to change the occupancy from a cafe with takeout to a restaurant with takeout and live entertainment. By way of history, a restaurant has been in existence in this same location for over 50 years. I'm not quite sure why it's been categorized at one point in time as a cafe, maybe perhaps the old zoning over 50 years ago, the original categorization was a cafe. But here, but we are here today to legalize that categorization of the existing business to a restaurant. Something else that's worth noting, even the certificates of inspection has the listed occupancy as a restaurant. So again, this location has been doing business as the industry currently has a takeout license, and we're simply here today to add live entertainment after tender RPM to its existing occupancy. The industry has been operating since 2017 and has been applying for one-day live entertainment licenses without any known issues to the neighborhood for approximately the last two years. An approval from this board will allow the applicant to continue to provide live entertainment to its guests without the hassle to continuously apply for one-day licenses. As you can see here from the drawings, it is a very small, if you scroll out a little bit more in the drawing here, you're on the correct page, but if you just scroll up, yeah, so, nope, keep going. There we go. So if you, if you can kind of see to the right as you enter into the doorway, there's a very, very small stage that would be set up in front of the corner of the restaurant. At this point in time, I'm going to open it up for any questions or comments from the board.
All right, thank you, Mr. Spitz. Are there any questions from the board? This is pretty difficult. Any questions? All right. Can I hear public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of the board. We've had a bit of turnover with liaisons, but as far as we're concerned, we're unaware of any concerns at this time from the community. With that, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you, board.
Thank you. Mr. Mannion?
Good morning, Tom Mannion of Councilor Aaron Murphy's office. Councilor Murphy would like to go on record as in support for 750 754A, Adams Street, for a change of occupancy from a cafe with takeout to a restaurant with takeout and live entertainment. Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckren, City Council, Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council, Michael Flaherty, Councilor of the Record, support.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers in support or opposition? All right, hearing none, may I have a second?
Motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Can we add for this applicant-only?
Katie?
Do we need to do one for, Madam Chair, it's Tom, isn't it necessary for a restaurant to have a this applicant-only proviso?
No, the applicant-only proviso was mostly for the live entertainment after 10:30. That's why I would recommend it.
Okay, we can specify that.
Oh, yeah, it's not for the takeout.
Okay.
I think motion to approve with the proviso of this applicant-only.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Ms. Beder Raza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes, just clarifying that the this applicant-only is for the live entertainment piece.
Correct. Chair agrees, yes, motion carries. Thank you, good luck.
Okay, the next case is BOA 1399265, address is 60R Albin Street. This is in Dorchester, this is the tear-down of an existing two-car garage behind our house and replace it with a Carriage Barn-style two-car garage, two-bedroom apartment for multi-generational living space. The new structure will expand the footprint of the existing garage on a 13,500 square foot lot in Dorchester. The violations are all in Article 65, Section 42, application of dimensional requirements, Section 4213, two or more dwellings on the same lot, Section 9, building height excessive, Section 9, front yard insufficient, Section 9, side yard insufficient, and Section 9, rear yard insufficient. Would the applicant please announce themselves and read their name and address into the record?
Hello, I'm Carmen Barsomean Dietrich, here with my parents Andrea and Gary Barsomean Dietrich. We're the formal applicants and we're the current owners and residents of 60 Albin Street.
Thank you. Please share with us the major components of your request.
Certainly, thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. As you can see, my parents and I are seeking to replace our existing 1940-ish style garage with a carriage house that would better maintain the Victorian character of the neighborhood. The purpose of the project is to enable me to move home, remain close with my family, and as an independent adult working remotely, full-time, to have this space. Historically, there was a carriage house, but as we don't have the original designs, we are presenting our drawings here. If you can see in the next couple of slides, so this is the front, the rear, and then the north and south, which are the two-side views respectively. The next slide, please, is a copy of our site plan, where we have shown how the carriage house, how the, sorry, existing garage fits on the property. And if you go to the next slide, you can see how the carriage house would fit in the plan using some of the same footprint. We would like to raise the point that our proposed unit is roughly 66% of the size of an existing unit next door, which has a smaller, sorry, which has a smaller property, and ours would have a smaller footprint and height than this unit at 52 Albin Street. The next slide is several other structures, carriage houses in the neighborhood, and the following slide are examples of converted carriage houses. We have asked our neighbors for their support, we have received a petition, or we have had 43 signatures of support on our petition, including all of our Butters. We've completed the community review process, including the approval of our civic association on September 22nd, which I believe has also submitted a letter of support. And then we also had our Butters meeting hosted by our neighborhood liaison, George Hun, on October 26th. We've included the statistics on the previous slide, and then this slide lists the variances that we are requesting. We also have our architect on the line if you have questions.
Thank you. Ms. Beder Raza, do you have any questions with the plans?
The drawings are pretty straightforward, and I really appreciate and commend the community process that your family has undertaken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton, can you share your recommendation?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Pretty straightforward on this one, we're in support of the project, we just ask for a design review.
Excellent. Are there any other questions?
Really, design review, I thought they did a really great job.
You know what's going to happen? ISD is going to ask us to do it anyway, so.
Okay, well, again, it's only a recommendation, so.
Yep, you're right.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from the board? All right, if not, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of the board. Lots of background information on the community process, as you heard from the applicant. Our office hosted a Butters meeting on October 22nd, excuse me, 26th. The Butters that were in attendance were in full support of this proposal. The applicant went on to meet with the Ashmont Hill Association, where they received their support as well. With that, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Excellent. Thank you so much. With that, may I have a motion? Is this neighborhood hand-raised for this project?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Ayim Adel Weewah. I'm the Director of Civic Engagement for District 4, City Councilor Brian Orwell. And I just wanted to go on record to say that the councilor wanted to defer this to the board. Due to that, that the Ashmont Hill Association, through two different votings, weren't able to come to a conclusion to some of this project, we just wanted to defer to the.
Are you on 60R Albin Street?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, with that, may I have a motion from the board?
I make a motion to approve with a VPDA design review.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Ms. Beder Raza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Weewell? Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, the next case is BOA 1352046, the address is 48 Industrial Drive in Hyde Park. This is the installation of one eight-foot by approximately three-and-a-half-foot internally illuminated freestanding sign for Tesla. The violation is Article 69, Section 28, sign regulations. Freestanding signs are forbidden, and the bottom of sign is lower than eight foot from grade, with the overall area of the sign exceeding 15 square feet. Would the applicant please announce themselves and read their address for the record?
Hello, I'm Jason Carrillo with Poblaki Sign Company, 1001 Edge Road, Framingham, Mass. 0171. Good morning, everyone. So we're here for a freestanding sign for Tesla, it's a 27, 27.5 square foot, kind of monument-type sign. The sign reads Tesla Collision Center. This is a largely industrial area, this is across from the Transdev Bus Facility. The sign would be, basically would mark the customer parking lot entrance. The sign is set back 10 feet from the, over 10 feet from the curb, so that would provide, we will not affect in sight lines. The sign has a very subtle form of illumination, only the logo and the lettering would light up. The sign would provide a public good by directing people to the parking lot entrance. We met with the Neighborhood Association twice and answered all their questions. There were really no major objections to the sign, and I'd be happy to answer any questions for that.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton, can you share your recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair, we recommended approval with design review. It's a Tesla sign, just, ISD is going to have a sign-off on it, that's all.
Thank you. Ms. Beder Raza?
Everything looks good to me, the only question I have is, what are your hours of operation? And is this sign going to be illuminated after, after working hours?
The facility will be open sometimes up till 9:00 PM, and they will shut it off when the facility is closed.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I take a public testimony?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Danielle Fonseca with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. I hosted a Butters meeting for this proposal on October 24th of 2022. There were three Butters in attendance at the meeting. One Butter that was at the meeting did have questions if the sign would be lit for 24 hours, if the sign could be seen from other streets in the lighting or around the neighborhood, and if other cars besides Tesla would be able to go to the shop. The applicant did confirm that none of that would be the case for those questions. They did attend the Reedville Watch Neighborhood Group community meetings two times, the last being in October. They attended this in-person, and the group did have questions about why the sign needed to be lit as they felt there was enough lighting on the street. Reedville Watch also wanted the applicant to follow up with a video of other signs at Tesla installed to see, kind of get an understanding of how it would look and work. Members of the group also inquired about the noise levels, when it'd be installed and at the shop. And the applicant did get all of these questions answered and follow up with them by email as requested by the group. And we haven't received any letters of opposition or support for this proposal, and the Reedville Watch Neighborhood Group did not send anything to our office if they were in support or opposition of this proposal as well. So at this time, we'd like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other raised hands?
I have no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. With that, may I entertain a motion? Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the VPDA design review.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Can we also add a proviso, if you're okay with it, Mr. Aiken, to limit the hours of illumination to reflect the working hours of the facilities?
Yes.
Okay, with that, may I have a second? Okay, Ms. Beder Raza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Oh.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, next case is BOA 1387346. The address is 631-633 Cummins Highway in Matapan. This is for addition to an existing building and change occupancy to a financial literacy educational center. The violations are Article 60, Section 38, Parking Screening and Buffering. The next violations are all under Article 60, Section 37, Off-Street Parking Insufficient, Section 8, Use Conditional, Section 9, Four-Area Ratio Excessive, Section 9, Front Yard Insufficient, Section 9, Side Yard Insufficient, Section 9, Rear Yard Insufficient. Would the applicant please announce themselves?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Good morning.
My name is, good morning. My name is Shadon Marsma Sarmi. I'm the attorney for 631 Cummins Highway LLC. My address is 1359 Haycock Street, Suite 7, Quincy, Mass. 02169. We are here today to ask for a relief to a single-level commercial space that was previously a church and convert it to a vibrant financial literacy space, the first of Matapan. In order to provide additional but necessary services, we would like to add an additional floor. As you can see from the plans, the second floor will be the same square footage as the first floor with 12-foot ceilings. The basement will be used for storage. We will house the utilities and some mechanicals on the first floor. We will provide an outdoor patio with green space on the existing lot. The existing lot does not provide for parking, however, we intend to provide two off-street parking spots. The property abuts a multifamily and then a gas station that sits on the corner. There's a funeral home across the street, and there are several two- and three-family properties on the street along with other, the commercial spaces. There is on-street parking in the neighborhood. We will provide bike racks in the rear and to encourage bicyclists. You can, you can get to Cummins Highway by bus, subway, trains. There are lines and routes that have nearby stops. The building is approximately 24 or 4 square feet. The lot is 43, 48 square feet. The space is underutilized, and we would like to maximize its full potential for the residents of Matapan and Boston. We have presented before the Matapan Main Streets, the GMNC, Edgewater Neighborhood Association...
Thank you. ONS will describe the public process.
Got it. And the project is in appropriate use of the lot. It will not adversely affect the community or create any detriment for any abutting residents, and we are here to answer any questions that you may have.
What's the occupancy, the full capacity of the space?
I think currently, it was a church previously.
There were some questions or concerns around parking, if you might want to address that a little bit further?
Yeah, so currently, we have two off-street parking spaces. There is, so the concern with the liquor store and the funeral home across the street and the gas station. So we are hoping to work with these abutters to utilize some of their space. I have been in touch with the funeral home across the street, Rebecca over there, and I'm pretty sure we could work something out when they're not in use. So we're hoping to schedule our activities around our neighbors for the most part. The gas station, I'm still trying to figure out what we can do there, if anything. And then the street itself, it does offer additional spaces, and our participants who ever come to our site will know that, you know, most likely, they can't park right up front. There would be available spaces down the street, and then we're gonna encourage public transportation force.
Thank you. Ms. Bede Barazza, have you reviewed the plans?
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm trying to understand what is the proximity of the adjacent building in regards to setback with the new two-story proposal? So the residential unit on the left, how, how far away would it be to your new proposal? Because your site plan only has existing conditions, I believe, on the lot sheet?
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't show proposed, so are you building within the same footprint?
Yes.
Okay.
The footprint will remain the same.
Okay. And so the residential building next, okay, it will remain the same, but you're going up another story, so is the property to the left, what is the, what is the open area?
Currently, I believe it's...
Because I think you might be right on that property line.
Right, it's pretty, it's pretty close, on this one. I do not have that information in front of me, but I can look back to you.
I'll look it up right now in the zoning viewer, but you can, you can proceed, Madam Chair.
Are there other questions from the board?
Yes, I think the tree in front of the property is not there anymore, right? But do you have any, any plans for the trees in the back of the property?
Yeah, so we are planning on putting, there is gonna be an outdoor patio, and then we're gonna have green space, so we're not going to remove a majority of those trees. I want to say, we want to keep the, the trees that are in the line of the property, the most part, and then we most likely only have to remove the one in the middle.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton, do you want to share your recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, that is one of the issues that we have in our provisos. We're in support of the project with design review, but we also want to have some screening and buffering along the parking, specifically, we're trying to maintain as many of those trees as possible.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll ask for public testimony?
Good, good morning.
Yes, Mr. James.
How are you guys doing? Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Eric James with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant for 631 to 633 Cummins Highway had an abutters meeting on October 25th, 2022. Unfortunately, we had no abutters in attendance at that meeting. They met with the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council, which ultimately chose to support with two provisos, but building level addition, so they recommended for the building to remain one level, and that they said that the proponents should speak to the director abutters of Crest Lookers and everybody else that surrounds them to be able to use their private parking or figure out the private parking situation, as the current site has no onsite parking. The proponents say that they plan on holding classes as well as renting out the space of those for community events, so the additional space would need to coincide with the additional parking needs. And so that they were also, the classes and events would be mainly in the evening. So the second proviso is again, parking, so they would like to obtain written agreements with the director abutters to use their parking spaces for planned classes and events. At this time, we have gotten one letter of support and one petition of support, eight signatures, and zero letters of opposition for this project. And so with that, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. You must know we're in a hurry. You spoke so fast.
Sorry about that.
Councilor Orellio's office.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, oh, good morning, Madam Chair, excuse me, members of the board. Jordan Fries here from Councilor Ricardo Orellio's office. The council would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands at the moment, Madam Chair.
Thank you, excellent. With that, may I entertain a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with VP, with VPDA Design Review paying special attention to the second story to ensure that there is enough clearance, setback from the adjacent property.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Mr. Hampton?
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Ruel?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good luck. Is 78 Rutland on?
I think he is on.
That was Mr. Robzinski?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Robzinski, yes.
Still must be that name. Or can you raise your hand if you're part of the development team?
Is the applicant for 78 Rutland on?
Anyone from ONS on that knows that the applicant's on as well, or have been in touch with their office? Yeah, I don't see them here.
Okay. May I have a, a motion to, is it to deny without prejudice, Tom?
Yes, Madam Chair, for failure to appear.
Yes, may I have a motion?
Just motion to deny without prejudice.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Ruel?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. May I suggest a 10-minute break, or do we want to hear any additional deferrals first?
Yeah, first, I think we should hear if there's any deferrals or withdrawals from 11:30 AM, Madam Chair.
Okay.
295 Webster Street, please.
Okay, I'll, I'll read this into the, the record. This is case BOA 1267825. The address is 295 Webster Street. This is change of occupancy from single-family to three-family dwelling, extend living space to basement for additional unit, and renovate and upgrade MEP. Please provide your name and address and indicate the reasons for deferral or withdrawal.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and welcome to all the new board members. My name is Matt Echol. I'm an attorney with Drago and Tascano with a business address of 11 Beacon Street. We were just retained on this project, and we will be submitting new plans, so at this time, we are seeking a deferral.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Motion for deferral.
You have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Ruel?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. Motion carries.
How, how, how long do you, do you need, April or May?
I think April would certainly be fine, Mr. Secretary.
April 11th at 11:30.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other deferrals or withdrawals? Mr. Frazier?
Morning, Madam Chair. 423 McClellan Highway.
Mr. Secretary?
Hey, this is, sorry, Madam Chair?
Yes, please, read that into the record.
Hey, this is BOA 1214604, address 423 William McClellan Highway. This is erect an outdoor advertising device, a digital billboard, consisting of a single monopole with back-to-back digital faces with dimensions of 14 by 48, facing McClellan Highway. Please provide your name and address and reasons for deferral or withdrawal.
Morning, Madam Chair. Timothy Fraser from the law firm Dean Torb, 175 Federal Street, Boston. Seeking a deferral on this one. This, the refusal letter actually should also include that it's in the iPod District. Upon the updated refusal letter, we'll probably have to go back and do some more community process, so requesting a deferral, April or May if possible.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
I make a motion for the Feral.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Ruel?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair says yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you.
April, April 11th at 11:30 again.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you. Mr. Joyner? Mr. Joyner, are you seeking a deferral or withdrawal?
Yes, I'm seeking a deferral for 10 Woodhaven Street, Matapan, Mass.
This is case BOA 1346254, 10 Woodhaven Street, Matapan. This is to erect a two-family dwelling with four off-street parking spaces in the rear. Your name and address for the record?
Derek Joyner, Joyner Development, 119 B Rhythm Street, Boston, Mass.
Can you state the reason for your deferral?
We would like to do more community support. We have a community association meeting scheduled for the 26th, so we would like to hear the neighborhood and the association before moving forward.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. I defer.
May I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Ruel?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
The new date is February 28th at 11:30.
Thank you.
Are there any other motions or deferrals? I mean, sorry, deferrals or withdrawals for the 11:30s? Hearing none, the board will take a 10-minute break and return at 11:45. Thank you. Do I need to do roll call again?
Yeah, let me make sure that everyone's here.
Excellent. Ms. Bede Barazza? Mr. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. Valencia?
Here.
Ms. Ruel?
Here.
Mr. Langham?
Okay.
Mr. Langham?
I do see him, Madam Chair. He's just got, he's good.
Okay.
Bobby, I'm here. Bobby, here.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Langham. Mr. Aiken?
Yes, here.
Excellent. Thank you. Mad Chair is here as well. Let's resume our 10:30 hearing cases.
Okay, first case is BOA 1418171. The address is 169 Maverick Street, East Boston. This is to erect and addition, renovate and change occupancy from a three to a four residential unit with rear and roof decks. The violation is Article 53, Section 8, Forbidden Four Residential Units. Would the applicant please announce themselves and read their addresses in for the record?
Good morning again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynn with a business address of 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, this should be relatively straightforward. You may recall, back in November of 2022, the board actually heard this case and granted approval unanimously. However, in the preparation of the decision, we did notice that one of the items for, that that should have been cited in the public notice was not included, and that was the multifamily use. So although we did make the exact same presentation back in November, we are essentially asking the board to reaffirm its decision from November to allow for the proper notice of the multifamily use to be included. So nothing has changed from what the board voted on in November. We want to jump quickly to slides seven and nine, at least the new board members can get an understanding of what it is that we're proposing.
Yes, thank you.
Give a quick, very quick overview again, as the board has already voted on this. If we can jump to slide seven, please. This is probably a good place to start. So, Madam Chair, just to refresh the board members who were there in November's recollection, this is an existing three-family dwelling that is being completely renovated. We did propose a vertical addition consistent with the surrounding context, both of one project that is under construction to our left and the project that has been recently approved to our right to match both height and style. This project is located within walking distance of Maverick Tea Station. If we could jump to slide nine, two slides ahead, that will also identify what the surrounding context would look like. So the building off to the left side of the screen is a corner building at Borleens and Maverick Street. As I mentioned, that is under construction. We are showing the rendering that was approved by the board some time back. And again, our building to our right has been approved and is commencing construction shortly. Neither project is affiliated with our project. This project went through a robust community process. Again, and having been presented to the board in November, we're essentially asking the board to reaffirm its decision from November to allow for the proper notice item to be included in the decision once filed.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Bede Barazza?
Madam Chair, so just for clarification, is this a clerical error from ISD in terms of noting it?
That's correct.
Okay, great. I do recall this project. I don't have any further questions.
Excellent. Mr. Hampton, can you give us your recommendation, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We just recommended approval on this because it is just clarifying the record. I'm sure we probably had design review in the November approval.
Excellent. Great. Any other questions from the board? All right. May I hear public testimony on this?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, calling anyone with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of the board to background information on the community process. Our office held in the Butters meeting on August 25th. One Butter joined the meeting to voice support. The project went on to the Gove Street Citizens Association September and October. The association voted to support the project with tenant support and one in opposition. Our office also received eight letters in support, which I believe the board should have on file. With that, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Parra?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Sebastian Parra. East Boston liaison for Councilor Gabriela Colletta. The councilor would like to go on break and support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testimony in support or opposition?
No additional raised hands. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I do have a follow-up question. Is it possible from Tom to reiterate what were the provisals in the November hearing?
Mr. Bede Barazza?
I can look that up real quick. It should have a decision filed on this one, I believe.
Because I would recommend to the board that we carry the same recommendations.
If I may, through the chair, Tom, we were holding the decision pending this hearing because we wanted to ensure that we had the proper notice on the multifamily. And it was BPDA exactly there.
Right, but were there any additional special attention earmarked?
I don't recall that from it, so straight design review. Well, Ms. Bede Barazza, the solution I would suggest is that the board just, you know, adopt a proviso that staff include the same provisos that were included with the written over hand of relief.
Right, okay. All right, that sounds good. I'll do that. Okay.
Ms. Dong, if I may, our recommendation back in November was just a straight approval with design review. We weren't calling out anything in particular.
Great. Thank you so much. With that, may I entertain a motion?
Yes, I would like to put forward a motion with approval with BPDA design review.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair says yes, motion carries. All right, next case?
Next case is, excuse me, BOA 1412172. The address is 2 Copper Smith Way in East Boston. This is erect a four-story, three-family dwelling with roof deck exclusive to unit number three. There's a long list of violations, starting with Article 27T5, East Boston iPod applicability. The remainder, Article 32, Section 4, G-COD applicability. The remainder are Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking insufficient. The remainder are all Section 9 dimensional regulations, lot area insufficient, floor area ratio excessive, building height excessive, building height, number of stories excessive, usable open space insufficient, side yard insufficient, rear yard insufficient. I believe this might be Mr. Lins. Please announce yourself and read your address into the record.
Sure. Thank you. Again, Madam Chair, through to the members, Richard Lins, 245 Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, this proposal involves an infill-type development on Copper Smith Way, which is located just outside of the Maverick Square area of East Boston. I do have a context photo here showing some of the surrounding context. As the board can see, it's a relatively dense area of East Boston, so much so that in the planning study for planning East Boston, this particular area is being recommended for some of the highest density and highest heights in the immediate neighborhood. Under the current zoning, this does sit presently within the 3F 2000 district. The proposed use is allowed in this particular neighborhood. It sits directly across the street from the waterfront commercial district, which actually has a height limit of 55 feet for the neighborhood. If we could scroll down a bit, I could probably get right to the rendering, and we can talk a little about what the proposal involves. So just looking around the neighborhood here, you can see, looking down Copper Smith Way, some of the other newer buildings that have been built. There are three, four, and five-story buildings located in the immediate vicinity. The building you do see off to the left here, Madam Chair, members of the board, is a pre-existing three-in-the-building. The board has recently approved that for renovations and a vertical addition, so that building will be a four-story building in the future, which is where our property is. So if we could scroll a little bit further, I do have a context rendering. So here, we are showing the rendered building at 62 Liverpool, which is immediately adjacent to our building, as well as our proposed building at four stories, as indicated in the announcement of the violations. This does include a roof deck that would be exclusive to unit three and access from an internal stairwell. We would have ground-level living space that would provide an opportunity for an ADA-accessible unit. The first and second floors are quite similar in size and layout. These are relatively smaller units compared to the upper-level unit, which is bi-level and entered on the third floor. With respect to the violations, again, being an existing separately-assessed parcel and relatively smaller parcel for the neighborhood, we do require relief for the minimum lot size as well as the side yard. We are proposing a side yard condition of four feet from the building nearest at 62 Liverpool, which you can see here in the rendering. We do maintain a one-foot setback, but again, that's pretty consistent with the setbacks along this section of Copper Smith, including new development that has occurred. We do propose a condition, again, this being a shallow lot, not having the full 100 feet in depth. We do propose a condition of a relatively short setback at the rear at one foot. However, that would be abutting a garage, which is located on a property from Maverick Street, so there is no habitable space directly behind our property. We are showing a floor ratio of a little over three. The maximum amount is 1.0. However, as we could see from the surrounding neighborhood context, it is pretty dense, and this FAR that we are proposing is consistent with recent development in the area. Last but not least is the height. 43 feet is the proposed height of the building. A little over 43 feet is the height of the building to the roof. 30 feet is the current maximum that is allowed under the zoning. But as I mentioned previously, this is located directly across from the waterfront commercial district. Buildings directly across Copper Smith Way can be at a height of 55 feet by right. And as I said, there are numerous of four, three, four, and five-story buildings in the immediate vicinity. We also are requesting a variance for parking. We would require three spaces of parking. This particular project did have a very involved community process. There was some consideration of looking at parking at the lower level. However, that would have not been very consistent with the types of uses along that side of Copper Smith. Copper Smith is relatively narrow, and we are within a short, less than five-minute walking distance to the Maverick T stop. We also require approval under the G-COD. We do have our no harm letter, as well as the letter for the Boston water store. I'll pause for any questions by the board, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Bede Barazza, have you reviewed the plans?
Madam Chair, I have reviewed the plans. I do have some general concerns regarding how tight the proposal is to the rear structure. You know, the only reason that the applicant can put some windows on the side to allow light and air into their bedrooms is because the adjacent property has approximately four foot, I think, one of the, like, a setback. But I am concerned with how close it is to the rear property. No further comments?
Through the chair, I can just respond briefly. I believe that structure of Ms. Bede Barazza is a garage that's utilized by the property to the rear. As for a setback, we do set our building back four feet on the left-hand side, which does allow for openings. I know on the right side, we're limited because of our proximity to the property line.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton, can we hear your recommendation, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our recommendation is approval with design review on this. This is fairly consistent with the development that's been going on in the immediate neighborhood around there. So we're in support of this project.
Thank you. Are there other questions from members of the board? Hearing none. May I hear from the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, calling anyone with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer judgment to the board. Some background information on the community process. Our office held in the Butters meeting on March 8th, 2022. We had a few Butters present, and they expressed some concerns regarding parking in the area, as well as questions about trash removal, since this is on a private street. Butters also mentioned they'd like a lighter-colored facade. The applicant went on to the Maverick Central Neighborhood Association in July of 2022, and the association voted to support the proposal. With that, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Christian Semenali, Boston Ground Water Trust, and we have both G-COD letters from the applicant.
Thank you. Mr. Parra?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Sebastian Parra, once again, is Boston liaison for Councilor Colletta. Based on the support from Maverick Central Neighborhood Association, the councilor would like to show her support. Thank you.
We'll go to Julius and then Michael. Julius, can you state your name and address for the record, please? We'll go to Michael. Michael, can you state your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Michael Sellers. I am at 56 Liverpool Street, represent the ownership of 56 Liverpool Street. I just wanted to go on the record supporting the project.
And I have no additional raised hands.
Chair, you're muted.
I'm so sorry. I have a bit of a cough, so I'm trying not to cough into the meeting. May I have a motion which includes the G-COD, please?
I make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
And the G-COD?
And the G-COD.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Ms. Bede Barazza? You're muted now.
Madam Chair, I'm going to go on the record for opposing just because it's maximizing completely the whole site without consideration of just open area, open space.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd?
No.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes, and for the reasons that it adds three units to the neighborhood when we need housing.
Thank you. Mr. Langham?
No.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, but motion does not carry. Can I have a second motion? Is that the process, Tom?
Yes, Madam Chair.
I like to put, I like to put forward a motion of denial without prejudice.
Do I have a second? Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Can I vote no in that I would rather see it approved, or is that fine?
Of course you can vote no.
No.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next case?
Okay, next case is BOA 1397661. The address is 790 Columbia Road. The updated refusal as of January 4th. This is add childcare from 15 months to 2.9 years to an existing school, the St. John Paul. The existing occupancy load of 39 will remain the same. The music room number will be changed to daycare, and the ground level shown on plans submitted and no work is to be done. The violation is Article 65, Section 8, Use Regulations, which requires Board of Appeals to provide relief for the use. Would the applicant please announce themselves and read their addresses in for the record?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, with that, I'm Mr. Maranti, business address of 168 St. Paul Street, South Boston. Joining me today is Mike Higgins from St. John Paul Catholic Academy. The proposal in front of us today is a request for a conditional use permit to change the occupancy just in one room to include a daycare program for the school. Total capacity for the daycare room being sought is for nine toddlers between the ages of 15 months and two years and nine months. There will also be two teachers and two aides to cover this room. I want to just give you a little bit about the history and how the school got to where we are today. SJP was founded back in 2008. Nine Catholic schools were merged to SJP to keep Catholic education alive in Dorchester and Matapan. There were five schools in the academy, four in Dorchester and one in Matapan, ranging from pre-K to a grade. Currently, there are three schools remaining. The program receives vouchers from the Early Education Center in Massachusetts. Over 200 students receive the vouchers for a full day and/or after-school programming. In this location, toddlers were added last fall because they have an additional space to grow enrollment. Last December, they were notified by the EEC that their toddler program must be licensed to be fully funded. They began the application process immediately and found out that they needed an I-4 building certificate for the toddler classroom to receive this type of funding. In order to obtain the I-4 cert, the occupancy must be changed in that one room for a daycare. There are no other changes being done to the building or the day-to-day operations. At this time, I'm going to pause and open up for any questions or comments or concerns from the board.
Thank you. I can definitely appreciate the need for more childcare. Are there any questions from the board? Ms. Bede Barazza, any issues with the plans?
No, drawings are adequate. Seems pretty straightforward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, well, with that, I'm going to ask for a public testimony.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, calling anyone with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of the board. Some background information on the community process. ONS held in the Butters meeting on October 24th. The community members that were in attendance were in full-hearted support. The applicant put on to the McCormick Civic Association, where support was expressed as well. With that, we defer to the judgment.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McEckern, City Council, Frank Baker's office, would like to go on record in support.
Thank you. Mr. Manion?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Tom, I mean, Councilor Eric Murphy's office. Councilor Murphy would also like to go on the record as in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Crowden, City Council, Michael Flaherty, Councilman Mike.
All right, we're here. Kristen McLean, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Kristen McLean, and I am the senior advisor to the mayor and the director of the Office of Early Childhood for the City of Boston.
Are you in support or opposition?
The mayor's office would like to weigh in in support of this application. There is only 19% of childcare that's available for infants and toddlers in the city of Boston, and so every single childcare seat for an infant and toddler is incredibly important. We urge you to grant this relief.
Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands at the moment. Did you hear from Councilor Murphy's office, right? Tom?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
With that, may I have a motion from the board?
Make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Vote, Chair votes yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. Madam Chair, I'd just like to check in and see for the rehearing at noon. Will that be requesting a deferral or withdrawal?
Yes. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams and Maranti, with the business address of 168 8th Street, South Boston. Here on behalf of the applicant from 82 through 84, Boston Street, as you can see from the advertisement here...
Sorry, sorry. We're just asking if you want to withdraw or defer. We're not hearing the case. Yes.
Okay, I'll read the case in quickly. Case BOA 1177912. The address is 82 to 84 Boston Street, and this is for constructing a single-phase digital billboard, freestanding pylon sign to the rear of 82 Boston Street per the attached plans. Okay, please go ahead, Mr. Spitz.
Great, yes. Again, thank you for the introductions. Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams and Maranti, business address of 168 8th Street, South Boston. We are here requesting a deferral on this matter. As you can see from what was advertised and what was read into the record, one of the conditions precedent was for us to specifically name the three locations of billboards, the existing billboards that we would be removing in replace of allowing support for the construction of this one digital billboard. Two of those locations have been fully identified and have been contractually agreed upon. The third one, we're still working out the legal parameters surrounding the written documentation, which we should have completed within about a week or two weeks. So, at this point, and due to that, in order to allow us to finalize those terms, we're asking for a deferral.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Motion for...
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Beto Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Thank you.
The new date will be February 28th at 11:30.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, we'll go, Madam Chair, we'll go back to the 10:30 hearings?
Yes.
Next, looks like we have companion case, case BOA 1408351, address 570R Warren Street. This is change occupancy from a two-family to a lodging house for 10 lodgers. All violations are under Article 50, Section 28, Use Regulation, Section 29, Floor Area Ratio Excessive, Section 29, Usable Open Space Insufficient, Section 29, Side Yard Insufficient, Section 29, Rear Yard Insufficient, and Section 44.13, two or more dwellings on the same lot. It's also case BOA 1408344. Is that correct? 570 Warren Street, and this is 17 lodgers and one owner occupied. Remove provision for this petitioner only is the request. The violation is Article 7, Section 3, Conditions for Variants, and the proviso to the petitioner only. Would the petitioner please announce themselves and read their address into the file?
Yes. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Happy New Year and welcome to the board of this, all the new members. My name is Attorney Derek Small, Business Judge of 51 Dobson Road and Branch. Today with me is Iva Comey, President of Commonwealth Land Trust, and we also have Mr. Michael Finch, who is the Architect of the Project. Today, we are here simply to leave 570 Warren Street to remove proviso to this petition only from the prior ZBA decision, which is currently in an existing lodging house of 17 lodgers. For 570R Warren Street, they're here to change the legal occupancy from two-family dwelling to a lodging house for 10 lodgers. The zoning sub-district here is 3F or 1,000, and the lot size is approximately 5,000 square feet. The zoning violations are all pre-existing non-conforming. As the side yard setback requirement is 10 feet, we are proposing 6.3 and 4.1. The rear yard setback is requirement is 30 feet. You have six and a half feet rear, and the FAR requirement is 0.8. It is maintaining at 0.56. Again, they are existing, and all we're doing on 570 again is proviso to prior owners and transferring that to Commonwealth Land Trust, the current owners, who will continue to occupy properties as lodging. Stop there, and you can open it up to any questions that the board may have.
Ms. Beto Barazza, have you reviewed the plans?
Yes, I have, and I don't have any questions. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board? Are these leased tenants, or are there minimum or minimum stays, or what is the circumstance?
I can let Iva Comey, who's the President and CEO of Commonwealth Land Trust, answer that question. Iva?
Yes, good afternoon. I'm the Executive Director of Commonwealth Land Trust. So, these will be leased units. It's a total of 26 units between the two buildings, and they're long-term tenants. We also have outside services to support them in this type of housing.
Great, thank you. Derek, do you, Mr. Small, do you have additional presentation?
Nope, that's it, Madam Chair. We'll open it up for questions and answers.
All right, great. Are there any additional questions from the board? Mr. Hampton, would you like to share your recommendation?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We don't have a problem with the transfer to change the proviso. We'd approve the project with particular attention with screening and buffering on the new parking. That's our concern right there.
Thank you. May I have public testimony?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Keisha Santana from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Some background on the community process. They received support from Project Right and surrounding community members. A little bit of background is that this was a problematic property, according to the residents, that they, the previous owners would have up to 56 tenants, and they are limiting them to 28 current tenants. So, they worked with community, have listened to them, and that's how they received their support, and at this point, we would like to defer judgment to the board.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Yes, good afternoon, members of the board. I'm Rihanna Bernal, Assistant Director at the Mayor's Office of Housing. On behalf of the Mayor's Office of Housing, I want to go on record in support of the 570 Warren projects and the work of the Commonwealth Land Trust. The Mayor's Office of Housing is also providing funding to support the development of these permanent supportive housing units. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do you have some raised hands? Else to speak in support or opposition?
Hi, my name is Carol Montgomery, and I am a resident and in the director of butters of this property, and also a co-chair of the Elm Hill Park Neighborhood...
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Carol Montgomery, 15 Elm Hill Park, and also co-chair of the Elm Hill Park Improvement Association.
Are you here to speak in support or opposition?
In opposition.
Okay, please.
So, first, I have to say that I'm really appalled that the Project Right gave support for this project when we were not involved in this community process. We are direct, immediate of butters to this property, and we've had a slew of concerns. So, we're requesting delay of any approval until a fair and a fair community process has been completed, because again, from all of the neighbors on my street, we have not
The pavement area with segmental retaining wall sections and associated subsurface infiltration and drainage system that overflows to city drainage system. There are two violations, Article 29, Section 4, GPOT applicability, which is the Green Belt Protection Overlay District, and Article 9, Section 1, Extension of a Nonconforming Use, which is healthcare use is forbidden in this zoning district. Would the applicant please announce themselves and read their address in for the record?
Thank you very much, Mr. Secretary. I am on the call this afternoon for two pleasurable occasions. One is to welcome all of you to the new year and also to welcome the new members. My name is Joseph Feaster for the law firm of Dade Street in Boston. With me is attorney Timothy Frazier from Dane Torby, 175 Federal Street in Boston, who will make the presentation along with our client. Thank you very much.
Thanks Attorney Feaster. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board, Timothy Frazier from the law firm of Dane Torby, 175 Federal Street in Boston. Joining me today for the presentation is Chuck Jones, who's the President and CEO of Harbor Health Services, as well as Matthew Kinlan, who's the Senior Staff Engineer at Gale Associates, that's the project engineer. And then we also have other members of the Harbor Health Executive Team. The project being proposed is an extension of the existing parking lot to add 21 parking spaces for patients at the Daniel Driscoll Naponton Health Center at 398 Naponton Avenue in Dorchester. The Daniel Driscoll Center has been in the community for over 50 years. It's a full-service community health center, provides medical, dental, behavioral support services to the patients for all ages, all over Dorchester and the surrounding communities. So currently, the parking is free, the health center has 52 parking spaces for staff and patrons. However, we don't actually control all of that parking, we're actually subject to leases for the owners of those parking lots, and those aren't certain to continue in the future. So to meet the needs of the patrons and our staff, we propose to add these new 21 parking spaces. So access to the lot will be by way of a private way that's adjacent to our lot, that's Holbrook Ave, and we gave consideration to that, so we wanted to make sure that the spaces that we're adding are actually authorized only to be used by staff, and that reduces the number of trips, so it's really just one trip in in the morning, and then at the end of the shift, for those essential workers, there'd be another trip out. So we completed a robust community process, we held the Butters Meeting, and then also met with the Pope's Hill Neighborhood Association, as well as some specific Butters to address their concerns. But overall, we think the project would be a welcome addition to the community because it addresses potential on-street parking issues, and also alleviates traffic concerns on the adjacent streets, and otherwise, it's in character with the surrounding areas. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions from the board. I have members of the Harbor Health Team, if you have specifics about Harbor Health, as well as Matthew Kinlan, who's here, if you have any technical questions regarding the parking lot.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Are there any questions from members of the board?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a couple of questions. One is, I was just wondering if there were no opportunities to lease spaces in other neighboring lots, and I guess perhaps the second question might be also for Jeff Hampton, how does this relate to kind of flood issues along Marcy, and as we get closer to the coast, by adding another large parking lot?
Yeah, I'll ask Madam Chair or Madam Ambassador if you could unmute or add as a panelist Chuck Jones to make sure that he's able to comment. As the CEO of the health center, he can better comment on the leasing structures among the surrounding parking lots. But right now, we are currently leasing some of those parking spaces. And again, you know, without having control of those lots, if any of those leases were to terminate or not be renewed, we'd have an on-street parking situation. So that's really what we're trying to do here, is to alleviate anything like that from happening by having 21 spaces that are under our control.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton, anyone?
That's true, that's true, Attorney Frazier, and good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board. We currently either lease or have relationships with several other parking spots. The most significant is a currently unoccupied building where on a given day, we have 15 to 20 of our staff using parking there. The rent for that, as a nonprofit, we're very cognizant of our overhead, the rent for that particular lot has gone up significantly over the past year, and we are not confident that should that facility be and location be sold, that the parking that we're currently allowed would not be sort of rededicated for that new businesses, clients, and so we're trying to avoid this on-street parking issue that could result in a couple dozen of our staff. We do have, just in terms of the purpose and our mission, we are a nonprofit community health center, we serve primarily members of the local community, over 10,000 members a year, medical, behavioral health, other community services such as food access, we have about 75 to 100 medical professionals that come to work there each day.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton, can you share a little bit more on your recommendations and why? Jeff Hampton? Is Jeff on, Jessica?
He's on, he may have stepped away.
He's on here, he's just muted, I don't know if he's...
He might have stepped away, okay. Are there any other questions?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to ask Mr. Jones if you are considering adding more trees to, you know, to provide some shade to the parking, or if you are considering a special cool pavement, pavement to reduce heat during the summer, or maybe in the future, covering the parking with solar panels or something like that?
Sure, so I'll leave that to Matt Kinlan to get into the specifics. I don't know if we have a slide here, but we did, in response to the Green Belt provisions, add some screening that's along Naponton Ave, so we're actually adding a tree-lined area to sort of shield the parking lot from Naponton Avenue, that corner that you see, it's probably to the top right of the slide that's on there. So the side of that parking lot that is adjacent to Naponton Ave, we are adding additional trees and greenage over there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions from the board?
I have a question, Madam Chair. Can I ask where, you know, the number of stalls to be added came from, or was it based on the amount of available land, or was it sort of a parking need?
So that one, I will leave to you, Matthew. How we arrived at the 21 spaces.
Mr. Kinlan on?
You'll probably have to unmute him, Madam Chair. He's in the parking lot.
Yep, Senator McFatca, Matthew?
How you doing? My name is Matt Kinlan with Gale Associates. So this parking lot, the 21 additional spaces, will actually be a net of 18, and this was based on the amount of parking that is rented out, or leased, for staff. And I know Chuck had mentioned earlier that it's about on any given day, 15 to 20 parking spaces for staff, so this was the layout that provided the most amount of staff parking.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Kinlan?
I'm sorry, that was Ms. Weewill, sorry. My question, no worries. I have another question. Do you offer any sort of subsidization of transit passes for your employees, or is there no option there, so that's why they drive?
I'll leave that question up to Chuck.
Yeah, we, for patients, certainly, we offer transportation services whenever possible for staff. From time to time, we have, we don't have a policy that says here, you know, for those of you who are traveling, many of our staff walk, but also many come from all over Massachusetts, some might leave even from Rhode Island, and so transit, the public transit for them would be much sort of more time-consuming to an already long commute. So we do not currently have a policy to offer staff, to answer your question, subsidized public transportation.
Thank you.
I will say, I have visited your location by public transportation, and it is not very easy, so just to echo your sentiment. Are there any additional questions? If not, I will open it up for public testimony.
You have one last question, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
What is the estimate cost to those 21 parking spaces?
We did a preliminary cost estimate, and the cost estimate came in at around $200,000? I think, believe, $200,000 to $225,000?
For the entire site?
Yes, yeah, including the subsurface drainage system, and any segmental retaining wall sections that will be required around the parking lot.
Thank you.
All right, may I hear public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, calling anyone with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would defer to the judgment of the board and some background information in the community process. Our office held a Butters Meeting on September 12th, there were some residents in attendance, there were concerns expressed regarding some traffic issues potentially on Holbrook Ave, as well as road control issues. I know that the applicant mentioned that they've continued to work with these residents to address those concerns, you know, besides that other basic concern of speeding, without that would refer to the board.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Joe McGeekren, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office. We're in support of this applicant today. This area is a small commercial back-up for Naponton. We struggle with parking in this area, many of the neighbors and the employees struggle on a daily basis, and this is much-needed parking relief for this area, so we are in support.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, City Councilor Michael Flaherty, complex of our address.
Robert Conley, are you looking at testimony or are you seeing it at this place? Is that the request to unmute you? If not, I have no additional way to answer.
Thank you. With that, may I entertain a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to put forward a motion of approval with the PDA Design Review paying special attention to buffer and screening, and as well as paving materials.
May I have a second?
Please take one.
Ms. Bede Barazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewill?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, members of the board.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board, again, congratulations, happy to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next case is BOA 1364628, the address is 615 River Street in Matapan. This is change of occupancy from a two-family to a three-family. Scope includes the addition of a third story to existing dwelling, renovation and remodeling according to plans, three-bed, two-bath unit at newly added top level. The violations are Article 60, first is Section 40, off-street parking insufficient, Section 8, use forbidden as a three-family, Section 9, floor area ratio excessive, Section 9, building height excessive, number of stories, Article 60, Section 9, usable open space insufficient, and another Section 9, side yard insufficient. Would the applicant please announce themselves and address for record?
Hello, my name is Giovanni Lorchette, my address is 615 River Street, I'm with my brother Steven Kamoga.
I'm with 615 River Street, nice to meet you all.
Thank you, can you briefly walk us through your proposal?
So we want to create a three-family floor for the additional dwelling unit, we just want to have more living space, because I work nearby, I work for the MBTA, and my brother is a Boston buyer.
Yeah, we're a Boston buyer, and I work in this district, but also, the reason is, our mother's disabled, she's blind, and has lung cancer, so we want to stay home and make sure that we have a better living situation for her.
So the third floor plan, if you see, we just want to change, like, so this is the proposal for the second floor, we just want to have like a little open concept, just break down one wall between the kitchen to the living room to open it up, and we're not changing nothing on that floor, that's going to be the same existence plan, so the second floor is the new proposal floor plan.
The plan itself, it's going to stay to the form of the house, so we're just really planning to raise the level to one more floor, which will match the neighborhood, which has many three families around. Right now, we have a pitched roof, so we're just going to raise it up, line out the roof, and as you can see...
Yeah, so the first, the first house is the existing property, how the property looks right now. If you see the second house with the flat roof, that will be the proposal plan to convert into a three-family home.
And with our property, we also have, like, in terms of like the offsite parking, we have additionally a driveway that fits up to four cars in it.
And we met with Eric James as well, the Neighborhood Association, and he approved, he didn't have nothing bad to say about...
ONS will, thank you, ONS will describe the community process in more detail.
Okay.
Ms. Bede Barazza, have you reviewed the plans?
Madam Chair, I have reviewed the plans, just to give some context to the board members, the street is pretty much about two-and-a-half-story residential units, and there are some kind of triple-decker typologies along the street that are three stories, very similar to what's being proposed. The question I have is, for the three units, I'm assuming it's for your mother, and then the other two units are for both of you, or are they being rented?
So the first floor is being rented, and the new additional unit will be for me and my older brother.
Okay, and then this is just to give context, it is in a three-family sub-district, so the use is an allowable use. No further questions, thank you.
Thank you. Are there other questions from members of the board?
I have a question, Madam Chair, I was just wondering, sort of what was the decision behind the flat roof? I've noticed a lot of the neighborhood looks to be more pitched or gabled roofs, there are some flat roof structures further south, I think, but I was just wondering what was behind that decision?
It was actually to match, if you look towards, you don't have a map up, but if you look towards the property of our neighborhood, if you look towards Malta Street and Down River Street, the majority of the three families around are all flat.
Flat roof, like 620...
Actually, the structure right across it is literally a flat roof, both front, three-story.
Yeah, 620 River Street.
Thank you. All right, may I have public testimony, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Eric James of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant for 615 River Street held a Butters Meeting on November 1st, 2022, that was attended by about four Butters. They also met with the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council, which voted to oppose, citing that the changes requested are not congruent with the existing homes abutting these properties, and that they will not support a flat roof, that the current elevation is looking to be for a two-and-a-half-story structure, and they were also calling for additional review of the additions in the rear for the balconies. The applicant for 615 River Street held in a Butters meeting on November 1st, 2022. That was attended by about four Butters. They also met with the Greater Matapan Neighborhood Council, which voted to oppose, citing that the changes requested are not congruent with the existing homes abutting these properties, and that the, uh, that they will not support a flat roof, that the current elevation is looking to be for a two-and-a-half-story structure. And they were also calling for additional review of the additions in the rear for the balconies and the parking. The River Street Civic Association, they did reach out to the River Street Civic Association, but they did not have a chance to meet with them. At this time, we have zero letters of support and zero letters of opposition for this project, and we are looking to defer to the judgment of the board on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. James. Is there anyone else to speak in support or opposition?
I have no reason that I'm going back, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I entertain a motion from the board?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with extensive X-Tier BPDA Design Review. Just, just to ensure that the typology of the triple-decker is worked within. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Hampton isn't here to weigh in on the extensive portion, but may I have a second?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, no, I, I had to get pulled into a phone meeting for a couple of minutes. My apologies. So, but Ms. Better Baraza will look into that and make sure that it looks like a triple-decker.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yeah, I'm happy to support this. The changes are within the footprint and adds an additional unit, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, the next case is BOA 1411320. The address is 15 Raymond Street, Alston. This is to raise the existing building and construct six, uh, six-unit building, and change of occupancy to a six-family building. The violations are all Article 51. The first is Section 56, off-street parking requirements. Parking required is forbidden. Article 51, Section 50.2, conformity of an existing building alignment. Article 51, Section 8, use forbidden. A proposed six-family is a multifamily use, which is forbidden. And Section 9, front yard insufficient, which is requires 20 feet. Would the applicant please announce themselves and put their name and address on, on record?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Secretary. Good afternoon, again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins with the business address of 245 Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. Madam Chair, this project involves the demolition of three existing structures on a site that is approximately a little over 14,500 square feet. It is located in a 3F-4,000 neighborhood district, which is significant considering that the minimum lot size is only 4,000 square feet for this area. So our lot being at over three times the minimum lot size certainly could accommodate a certain, a certain level of development on the site. Nevertheless, my client originally had considered subdividing the lot into two conforming-sized lots and constructing two separate three-unit dwellings, which would be allowed as a matter of right in the 3F-4,000 district. Through the community process, we agreed to eliminate the two-building design and propose a single six-unit building design, which would be far more consistent with the regulations concerning dimensions for the 3F district. Specifically, and I will run through those who want to just scan ahead a little bit to the rendering. We can always jump back if there's any specific questions on these. But the rendering I have is started on page eight, if we could just move to that, please? Here we go. So with respect to the proposed site, the minimum lot size required for this area is 4,000 square feet. As I mentioned, we have 14,662 square feet. The additional lot area that would be necessary for additional dwelling unit in this case would be 8,000 square feet, based upon the calculations under the, uh, of the Alston zoning code. We would have about 10,600 square feet. We have more than enough lot area for the proposed six units that we are setting forth here. Minimum lot width for this district is 45 feet. We do have 70 feet, and we do meet the side yard requirements well, well in excess of the five-foot minimum that is required. We have 13 on the left and 16 on the right, which will also accommodate a driveway for a common parking area located to the rear of the building. The rear setback for this property, under Article, under the Articles applicable to this neighborhood, requires a 30-foot setback from the rear property line. We have almost three times that. We're setting our building back almost 80 feet, and I'll jump to the site plan in a moment. With respect to the floor-to-air ratio, the maximum permitted is 80%. We're just below that, at 79%, so we're also compliant in that regard. The permitted heightening area is 35 feet, three stories. We are at three stories, 33 feet, and therefore compliant, again, with that dimensional control. The open space required per unit is 650 square feet. We have a generous amount of open space that we're able to provide per unit. In this case, well in excess of the 650, about 960 square feet per unit. Last but not least is the parking. We are proposing a total of 12 parking spaces. Oddly enough, the zoning code only requires, by, based on the calculations, would be 11 parking spaces for six units. We are cited for off-street parking, however, the citation is more technical than it is for deficiency. In this case, because the use itself, being multifamily, is not permitted in the district, any additional parking that we do propose is considered a zoning violation. However, by providing at least two parking spaces per unit, we're clearly meeting the purpose and intent of the zoning code with respect to parking. So all in all, overall, this literally only requires relief for the use of the building itself, that, that being a multifamily, as opposed to two separate three-families, which we originally contemplated. If we want to jump down quickly to the site plan, I think I can just walk through quickly what the proposed layout would be. You know, one more slide after this one, here it's a little easier to read. So as you can see here, we show the common driveway at the right side of the building. Through the community process, we did hear from the Director Butters, both the rear and to the right of our property. And we agreed to incorporate a fence, which would be, you know, aesthetically acceptable to them, and we're obviously going to do that at our cost. There are a number of other concessions that we did make with the Butters, including providing some screening on the rear decks, as well as location of mechanical equipment for HVAC to the rear of the building. We're not proposing any roof deck on this building, so the height of our building will, or at least the roof of the building will remain inactive. And I know one of the other violations talked about both front yard and modal setback. That seems to be a little bit contradictory, since the zoning code does actually permit three-modal setback in the district. So to cite us for front yard and modal seems a little bit confusing. Nevertheless, that is something that I think typically can be worked out in the BPDA Design Review process, especially since we do have more than sufficient rear yard setback. So any adjustment of the building, either whether it has to move forward or backward, we certainly would have sufficient room to do that. With respect to the unit sizes, these are all generously sized, about 700 square feet, three-bedroom, two-bath units. This is something that we heard specifically from the neighborhood as to building family-sized units. This is intended for homeownership, so these would be individual condominium units upon completion. I will pause there, Madam Chair. If there are any specific questions on the project, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, you answered my questions on the question and whatnot. Ms. Better Baraza, do you have any questions on the plans?
Um, Madam Chair, I don't have any specific questions. I would love to hear Bob D'Amico's feedback on the parking.
Madam Chair, if they've taken, uh, I think that, I'm not sure that Bob's on the line. If he is, he can chime in, but we were left with his note that this, these plans work well from a design perspective.
For parking, okay.
Correct, for parking, from Bob.
Thank you.
Mr. Hampton, did you have any recommendations on this one?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My apologies, I don't know why this didn't make it over to you. We've recommended approval with Design Review on this.
Great, thank you. Are there additional questions from the board?
I have a question, this may be kind of information, but would there be an opportunity to reduce the parking later with Design Review?
That's a, that's a great question. I, I think that what we had proposed in the neighborhood of 12 spaces, we did hear some mixed reviews on that, some asking for less parking, more open space. I fear that if we were to reduce the parking, we would trigger an additional violation, even though we were cited for insufficient off-street parking. I believe the correct violation is that we have excessive off-street parking currently, based upon what we're proposing at 12 spaces. So perhaps, I believe we could reduce it down to 11 spaces, if that was what the board required, because that does comply with the calculation for the Alston neighborhood for parking.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board? If not, may I hear public testimony?
Uh, yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Frank Mendoza here at the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Austin Brighton Liaison here to testify that the applicant attended a, relatively sparsely attended a Butters meeting. We had a couple of concerns from a Butters, especially a couple who had asked to have those concerns addressed in writing, which the applicant did. The applicant then went on to meet with the Alston Civic Association and the Brighton-Alston Improvement Association. The Brighton-Alston Improvement Association supported it as homeowner condos, design review, and landscape design, and reports that the neighborhood buffer concerns, and this is the second design of one building only. The Alston Civic Association gave support to the project, stating, stating that they approved the proposal with a proviso of BPDA Design Review, that no building code relief be granted, and upon completion that the units be sold as condominiums on the open market with the express intent of open occupancy. At this time, we'd like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in support or opposition?
Yes, Madam Chair, Annabelle Gomes from the Brighton-Alston. We'd like to go on record in support with Design Review, especially along the side of the driveway that affects the neighborhood with a lot of concerns. She asked for proper greenscape to offer her property. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I am, I'm, I'm, Chair members of the board, representing the Alston Civic Association. First of all, I'd like to welcome back those returning members of the board, and to congratulate the new members of the board, and look forward to working with you. We are in favor of this project, as was mentioned by the Office of Neighborhood Services. We like the fact that they are family-friendly, homeownership opportunities, minimal violations of the zoning code, and the, the fact that, uh, the design of the building tends to assimilate very well into the existing neighborhood. So we would like to go on record in support, and also again mention that the proponent was very receptive to the concerns of the Director Butters next door. As Frank mentioned, they, they did respond in writing to those concerns, and we've included that commentary on our, that commentary.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Paul Sullivan, City Council at-large, Michael Flaherty. Val, Flaherty. The sentiments, the, 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 record and support.
Thank you.
Rita? Yes, my name is Rita Vedya. I live at 11 Raymond Street with my wife Julia Esqu and my two boys. We've lived here for 25 years. We're Director Butters, and we also own 15 Athol Street, which is an abutment property. We oppose the project because we have not received a comprehensive written and signed agreement from the developer with our five requests that we were, that we have submitted to the ZBA and also to the Alston Civic Association. So even though they have been verbally acknowledged and some email back and forth, but we have not actually received our requests in writing in an agreement from the developer. So our concern is, the project gets started, and these things are verbally mentioned here or there, but we have not received these five requests. I can go into these requests if you want me to, but I'll stop here.
Thank you. Are there any additional raised hands?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, thank you.
Great. May I have a motion? Or is there any additional discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve with the BPDA Design Review.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr., uh, Ms. Better Baraza? You're on mute?
I'm sorry. If I can just add to the, to Mr. Aiken's motion of a proviso for site planning to ensure that there's screening and buffering along, along adjacent property.
Mr. Aiken, do you accept those additions?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd? Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair also votes yes, motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
With that, uh, would folks like to take a 15-minute break?
A break would be nice.
Okay, let's, let's take a 15-minute break, and we convene at 1:20. Thank you. Ms. Better Baraza?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. Valencia? I see him, we'll come back. Ms. Weewell?
Here.
Mr. Langham?
Here.
Mr. Aiken?
Here.
Okay, Mr. Valencia?
Yes, I'm here, I'm sorry.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Okay. Uh, we're under rediscussions for 11:30. We're beginning with case BOA 1256992. The address is 221 East Eagle Street, East Boston. This is to erect a multifamily dwelling of six units with six parking spaces. Has a number of Article 53 section violations. Section 8, forbidden multifamily dwellings, six uses of forbidden use. A number of Section 9 dimensional regulation violations. Lot area for additional dwelling units is insufficient. Usable open space requirements is insufficient. Height requirements excessive, three stories max allowed. Front yard setback requirements is insufficient. Side yard setback requirements insufficient. Rear yard setback requirements insufficient. Height requirement is excessive. Floor area ratio excessive. Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking requirements insufficient. And Article 27T, East Pod, East Boston iPod applicability. Would the applicant please read their name and address into the record?
Yes, and good afternoon, again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, 245 Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner. What we have here on the screen, just a quick overview of the site context. This property is located in the Eagle Hill section of East Boston. It presently consists of a pre-existing three-unit dwelling, which we would propose to demolish and replace with a new six-unit residential dwelling with parking at grade for six vehicles. If we could jump to the next slide, this will help at least put things probably in better context. So on the left-hand side of the screen, the board members can see what the existing building looks like. It is currently vacant. It is in very rough condition on the interior, and certainly would require a substantial amount of investment. And looking at this, we are proposing this to be what would be a four-story building. And I know, certainly based on the last two presentations I had, where I had four-story buildings, I think it's important to talk a little bit more about context for the board. So in this case, as we can see, the surrounding context, the triple-deckers that typically exist in the Eagle Hill section of East Boston have that exposed foundation, where we typically have a walk-up to the first level. That actually brings the height of these triple-deckers up a bit. Not, you know, not too different than we see throughout the East Boston community, but something that we particularly see here in Eagle Hill. With respect to new construction that occurs, you know, in order to ensure AD accessibility, we obviously designed the building where entrance is at grade. So comparing that to the existing three-family dwellings, we carefully went through this process. And I do have Eric Zacherson on, who was the project architect of this as well. And I think it's helpful to look and see two buildings down to our right as a recently completed project that also sits at four stories. And that building is pretty much consistent in line with the height of the triple-decker being located next to it. So we were trying to respect a lot of what we do see on this side of East Eagle Hill, the height of this building. With respect to the unit sizes, we do have a mix of three two-bedroom and three-three-bedroom units. Again, this was something that was born of the community process, asking for larger-sized units that could accommodate families. The average unit size is about 1,100 square feet total, with the larger units closer around 1,200 square feet. If we could jump to the next slide, this will also, you know. If we could jump to the next slide, this will also be an important discussion. So one of the other things that we did here in the community process was the amount of open space and the relationship of our property to the surrounding properties. Our building originally went back a bit further than what we see here, and that may be reflective in the older BPDA recommendation. This project has been deferred numerous times in order to rework the process and to ensure that we were addressing some of the concerns that we heard. We do actually have, from our building to our rear property line, a compliant setback of 30 feet. That is what the zoning code requires, and we do propose to make this a usable courtyard for the entire building. We also show some decks off of the back, while those do protrude off the building slightly over the setback requirement, the bulk of our building itself is within the setback of 30 feet, so we do comply with the building portion. Those decks are balped, easily be eliminated for full compliance with the rear setback. We do show roof decks, those are accessible to the upper two levels, I'm sorry, the upper two units, those are access from internal stairwells and hatches. There are no head houses being proposed, which is pretty consistent with what the Eagle Hill recommendations are for design. If we could jump to the next slide. Okay, so we do show our site layout. Next slide, please, I think we just want to see the floor plan layout if we can. Yeah, this is actually good here. So we do show the internal garage with our lobby space area when you access the building. One of the unique, I think, features that we are including in this building to ensure that all units are accessible, this building does have an elevator to allow access to all levels of the building itself. We show the six parking spaces in semi-enclosed garage, we're able to also accommodate for trash and other storage within the garage itself and not require any of that to be located on the exterior of the building. With respect to the relief, Madam Chair, this is in a 3F 2,000 district. The lot size itself is sufficient for a double lot, so with 4,166 square feet, this could be subdivided into two conforming lots, each with a little over 2,000 square feet. We're proposing to keep that as one lot and propose this as a multifamily use. With respect to lot width, we do comply, and we have a little over 33 feet, 20 feet is the minimum requirement. We do require relief on the side yard, I believe we do set it at close to zero, and we did that in order to address some of the setback on the right side, where we do provide at least three feet and allow for openings and windows. One of the things that we looked at was sort of the relationship with the existing buildings along that block, and to keep sort of the same rhythm of the separations between buildings, and that's one of the things that we did see in that rendering as well. Our building height is 44 feet, 35 feet is what the zoning code permits. However, as I showed in that earlier rendering, I believe that the context of that side of East Eagle Street specifically certainly keeps this building in line with what we do see with the elevated triple deckers, as well as the new construction of the four-story buildings for that area. With the decks, with the roof decks and the courtyard that we realigned for this building, we are showing at about 350 square feet of open space per unit, and we do show a total, as we said, six parking spaces locating enclosed garage. Although eight spaces would be required, we're able to at least accommodate one space per unit for each of these units. This is intended for homeownership. This was again something we did hear throughout the community process as being the preference, so these would be intended as condominiums. I will pause there and address any questions or comments from the board.
Great, thank you. Mr. Hampton, do you have a recommendation?
We do have a recommendation. It is from December of 2021. So the plans have changed substantially, so our original recommendation on the original plans was for denial. We haven't reviewed these plans, but I know just from looking at it, it is a much better version of what we had seen from the beginning. I can't make a change in the recommendation, I've made it aware to the board, but our recommendation was over a year ago.
And Madam Chair, if I may briefly, we have changed this project, including the open space to the rear. We understand lot coverage was one of the BPDA's initial concerns, and again, dealing with the height with respect to the surrounding context was also some of the changes we made with some of the design.
Is it possible that you can just briefly identify what is the new kind of open space and lot coverage? Because what you're shown in the rendering shows a significant open space, but it's not necessarily what I'm seeing right in front of us on the ground level.
Yeah, I'm looking at this plan here, if we can jump to...
Can you just clarify whether the rendering is not depicting what we see in the actual plans to be built?
Yeah, so Eric, if you're available, I know that the setback area for the building is 30, the building itself is 30 feet to the rear property line. This may be actually a previous site plan, but if we can jump back perhaps to the open space landscape plan, that will probably help. This, I'm sorry, if we can jump, yeah, so jump back to the next...
Now, is this accurate, what's going to be actually built?
Sure, so if we can jump to that next slide, that actually is the proposed site plan. Nope, forward. There we go. Yeah, so we are showing, Ms. Bedder Barazza, is the 30-foot setback to the building itself, and it's approximately 24'7 to the deck that's being shown. Eric, if you could also clarify that.
So if we go then to the ground floor plan, the first floor of the parking, right here, yep. Is the parking lot spaces really in the open area because the dotted line is the boundary of the building?
Yeah, so Eric, if you could provide clarity on that, I thought we had made that adjustment for purposes of the open space.
All right, I'll start him on. Do you have a site plan showing the property to your left? I'm just looking at the stairs right now, you are almost on the property line.
Correct.
We really want to see what is the relationship between your building and the stairs and your abutment. And also, if you talk to the abutment, what are they thinking about, how are we building so close to a property?
I think if we go back to the slide, two slides to the four, that may actually, there we go. So we do show our building to our left, sir, the, they are setback from their right property line, so we do, although we do come within close proximity to the property line on the left, there's a portion of our building that actually sets back on the front.
Do you have any wiggle room to move your building, your abutment to the right, just to create more space between your property and the property on the left?
I'm certain that through the design review process, the board were to grant, they could include that as a proviso, and certainly we could address some setback on that left side. Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Is that setback that Mr. Valencia is referring to, is that sort of nearing existing conditions, or are you actually sort of further encroaching towards that property line?
That's a great question. I don't have the overlay here, but I think if we go back to the head-on shot of the street view, we could probably get a good look at where that lines up.
Is your architect on?
I believe he was, I had him on earlier, let's see. Eric, if you're available, could you respond on those questions? I don't know that I can answer those.
I think it would be helpful to know what our existing existing violations versus new ones.
Yeah, he does have his hand raised, so I don't know if he's able to speak, but I do see him on.
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry. I, technical difficulties like everybody else. What was the question?
Is the setback on the left a pre-existing condition, or are you further encroaching on the left?
At the, yes, we are further encroaching at the left. We are, for a portion of the building, we are near and near zero setback on the left side.
So on the left side, your huge estate, what is your existing side yard setback, and what are you proposing?
From the existing building?
Yep, currently, right now, what's your side setback to the left?
Sorry, I'll have to pull up the certified plot plan for that. This might be the first slide, one of the first slides in this presentation, but I'll see if I've got it.
It's the second slide. Actually, I have the drawings.
Excellent, right there.
Yeah, this one.
There we go. Oh, okay, yeah, so the, this is the proposed plan, and you can see how on the left side we actually get to zero.
Right, and what's required for side setback?
2.5.
2.5 is required, and you're asking relief because you're going to zero, correct?
Yeah, three inches, yeah.
Okay, 2.5, okay. And then in terms of clarifications, right now, you're showing 30 feet rear setback, but on your ground floor plan, it seems like your parking, your open parking spaces actually kind of covers portions of that 30-feet rear yard.
That is correct.
So it's not really open, it's asphalt, right? It's covered, it's not really green space?
Yeah, about half, but there's 300, almost 100 square feet of green space.
Okay, so that really answers, that answers my question, that your 3D rendering image is not representative of the proposal. So we should go by your actual site plan, your plan documents?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any further questions, thanks.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions from members of the board?
I have a question, just to sort of better understand the rear of the building, do you have a rear elevation, or is it only a rendering?
We do, we do. I think we advance the slides forward down to 10 through 12, we show elevations. Yes, around the...
So it is open?
Correct.
Gotcha, okay.
But the cars kind of bleed out?
Yes.
To the rear?
In fact, the cars are mostly behind the building at that point.
Okay, thank you. With that, can I hear from the public?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Irwin with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office like to defer judgment to the board. Some background information on the community process, it's been a lengthy one. Our office held a Butters meeting on September 2021. A Butters, the tenants expressed concerns regarding density and parking, and also concerns regarding the potential displacement of the current tenants of that building. We understand that the applicant has been working with those tenants and possibly securing them other locations for them to move within the neighborhood. The applicant went on to meet with the Eagle Hill Civic Association. The association voted to oppose the project due to the number of units and density. With that, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
You may turn here. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, A. Hurley, can you state your name and address on the record, please?
Hi, this is Amanda Hurley. I am in a Butter and reside at 229 East Eagle, and just wanted to express our support of this project. It's been great seeing this project adapt over the past few years, from the original proposal to what it is today. The design is stunning, and it fits in perfectly with the feel of Eagle Hill. We expressed early to the developer, we wanted to see one-for-one parking, so we're really glad to see that this has six spots, and that is it.
Thank you.
Brian, go ahead. Can you state your name and address for the Butters?
Yep, this is Brian Malconian of 119 Princeton. Just wanted to echo what the last lady said, completely agree, we think this would be a great addition to the neighborhood, especially with the developer's track record of consistency of beautiful projects and really helping transform the neighborhood. So that's it, but full support of the project.
Chris? Chris Brule, 215 Princeton Street, Eagle Hill. I have reviewed the plans and in full support of the project. I think it not only just brings more homes to the neighborhood, but it also brings more parking to the neighborhood.
Thanks, and I have no additional questions.
Great, thank you. Are there any other questions from the board?
Is it possible that we can just get on the record how many letters we received? Because my recollection is that there were a lot of letters of opposition, but that could be from old proposal. So if we can just get a report on that, that would be great.
Ms. Bedder Barazza, David? Yeah, there's nothing new, there's nothing new in the file in regards to opposition or support. There's lots of letters from the prior months on this project, I don't see anything new.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I...
I would also like to ask a question, please, thank you. Going back to Connor's comments from Office of Neighborhood Services about displacement of tenants and helping them to relocate, can the proponent speak to the status of that?
I don't have anything specific through the chair, Mr. Aiken. I know that the building is vacant, I know that there was conversations with the prior owner and his tenants about relocation. The building, regardless of whether there was development plan, was in dire need of repairs and rehabilitation. From what I understand, all of those issues have been addressed adequately for the tenants. I know that there were some tenant advocacy groups in the past who were present at zoning board hearings. Those appear to have been all addressed. I don't believe any of them are here to oppose that. I know that they would speak in opposition if in fact they were not satisfied with the results for the relocation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? If not, may I entertain a motion? Does anyone want to put forth a motion?
Okay, I make a motion to approve with BPDA's design review with a special attention to increasing the side yard setback.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Ms. Bedder Barazza?
I'm in opposition.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Wuwo?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
No.
The chair also votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next case is BOA 1303397, the address is 124 Leyden Street. There's a companion case, BOA 1303651, the address is 126 Leyden Street. The refusal for 124 is, we're proposed to include erection of a new four-family dwelling at 126 Leyden Street. Sorry, there's a clarification here on the refusal letter. Subdivide the 6,004-square-foot lot into two lots. Lot A shall have a structure to be known as 124 Leyden, and the existing structure known as 126. The violations for 124 are Article, are all Article 53 related, Section 8 forbidden, four-family dwelling use is forbidden, Section 9 insufficient lot size, Section 9 excessive floor area ratio, Section 9 number of allowed stories has been exceeded, Section 9 insufficient rear yard setback, Section 9 dimensional regulations insufficient front yard setback, Section 9 insufficient side yard setback, Section 56 insufficient parking, as well as Article 27T-5, East Boston iPod applicability. The refusal letter for 1303651 for 126 Leyden is Article 9, Section 1, reconstruction of extension of a non-conforming building, the reduction of lot size via subdivision of a non-conforming use is forbidden. The remainder are all Article 53, dimensional regulations applicable in residential sub-district, insufficient lot width, insufficient lot width frontage, excessive floor area ratio, insufficient side yard, insufficient lot size, and Article 53, Section 56, off-street parking, insufficient parking, the existing parking removed. Would the applicant please identify themselves and read their name and address into the record?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Secretary. Good afternoon. Once again, Madam Chair, members of the board... Yes, thank you, Mrs. Secretary. Good afternoon. Once again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lenz with the business address of 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner.
Mr. Lenz, can you, since this has been before us before, can you just provide context for, especially for the new board members? What has changed since then?
We actually had taken several deferrals, Madam Chair, based upon board makeup. I think we have five-member board. We opted for a full seven-member board on this.
Okay, so the content has not changed?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So with respect to this, this is a property located in the Orient Heights section of East Boston, relatively short walking distance to Orient Heights T Station. Our proposal would subdivide the existing, a little over 6,000-square-foot lot into two lots. We would maintain an existing, pre-existing three-unit dwelling on the right-hand side and propose to erect a new four-unit dwelling, three stories, with parking at the lower level for four vehicles. If we scan ahead, we could probably get to the rendering and the site context a little bit better, a little bit of site overview. I believe we do have a rendering shown, we can always come back to that. Our existing conditions are here. You can see the, the blue building on the right-hand side is the existing three-unit dwelling. The land to the left side, which actually runs through both, all the way through to Breed Street, which is located to the rear of the property and uphill a bit, is, is where this is located. So we propose to erect the new four-unit dwelling on that site. If we could just advance the slide one more, I believe we have the rendering. So again, just a different view, looking up and down Leyden Street as well. And then next slide should show the rendering as well. I apologize, one more. Okay, so I believe we also have Eric Zacharson on here as well. One of the things that we had done, again, in looking at the surrounding context, was try to understand what we do see typically on this side of Leyden Street for this proposal and trying to keep with the character along this section of Leyden Street. There are a number of three-story dwellings throughout this portion of the neighborhood. We are able to accommodate parking at the lower level. We would be able to fit four vehicles at the lower level for purposes of having one, one vehicle per unit. This building also would have an elevator, not unlike the last proposal, allowing accessibility to, to each of the units here. Part of what we're looking at by way of relief for this particular site involves the lot size. So although we are required to have 4,000 square feet minimum, this particular site would be around 3,634 square feet, slightly below what the minimum lot size requirement would be. Our proposed floor area ratio would be 1.22. It's in excess of the .8 that is particularly allowed for this neighborhood. And our rear yard, although is required to be at 40 feet, we're at 25 feet 9 inches. One of the things I would point out, however, is that Article 53 does have exceptions, what we call through lots. And in this particular case, if this lot existing as we're proposing it would not require any rear yard because the zoning code actually indicates that the front yard requirements will apply for through lots. And in this particular condition, we are setting the building back a substantial amount of distance from Breed Street. Furthermore, there is no real usable rear yard because we are on a slope and the property does slope dramatically up towards Breed Street as well. Our side yard conditions, we are showing three-foot setback on each side. Seven foot is the requirement under the code, so we do request relief for that. And with respect to parking, we are required to have a total of five spaces based upon the four units we're proposing. As indicated, we would be providing four spaces, one per unit. The height of our building is 31 feet 6 inches. It's a three-story building. That is below the 35-foot height limit that is currently permissible in the Orient Heights neighborhood. However, two and a half stories is the limit, notwithstanding the fact that mostly this side of Leyden Street is full triple deckers and full three-story buildings. So we are requesting a variance for a story all. The units themselves include a mix of one and two beds. We do have a total of three two-beds and one one-bed. The two beds are a little over 750 square feet each, and the one-bed actually has, is a little bit smaller. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions before.
Thank you. Ms. Better Baraza, have you reviewed the plans?
Yes, the project, the drawings are adequate.
Mr. Hampton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We made this recommendation back in August and to us, it was just too big. The proposal was excessive. The number of violations was excessive, so we recommend it to now without prejudice.
Thank you. Are there other questions from members of the board?
Madam Chair, I have a question. Is, could we see a site plan?
Yes, I believe we go back. Here we go. This existing condition plan, I do believe we proposed condition plan further in. Did you want to see this existing or proposed?
Proposed, please. So we want to get a sense of the coverage.
Yeah, I think we're looking at, yeah, further. There we go, perfect. So again, that area to the rear is actually sloped dramatically up towards Breed. Breed is probably elevation plus 30 from Leyden Street. So we do have a substantial amount of slope in the back. We do anticipate providing some jetta landscaping on the rear portion of the property, but it's probably not very usable based upon the slope of the land.
Are there, did that answer your question, Ms. Weewell?
Yes, thank you.
Are there any additional questions from the board? May I have a public testimony in support and/or opposition?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office likes to defer to the judgment of the board. Some back information on the community process. Our office hosted a butters meeting on March 31st. Seven butters were in attendance. A butters who were present expressed concerns with existing rodent issues that they think might increase due to excavation, concerns about parking, as well as conversations around what they perceive as existing high density on Leyden Street. The project went on to the Orient Heights Neighborhood Council, for which voted, for which the council voted to oppose, with 14 residents against and three in support. Our office has also received two letters in opposition, which I believe we've made available to the zoning board for appeals. With that, we refer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other testimony?
Would you have a raise, Joanne? Can you state your name and address for the record, please? Hi, Joanne, can you hear? Can't hear you. Hi, Joanne. For some reason, I'm not sure if you have any connectivity issues, but we cannot hear you. No, no, welcome to, oh, hello? I'm not sure what's happening there. Apologize. Oh, Joanne? Yeah, I'm not sure what's happening. I have no additional raising.
Madam Chair, if I could just respond briefly to some of the comments regarding the process. You know, we, we certainly understand the concern, the concerns over construction-related activities, including rodents. We did address that adequately, we feel, in the community presentation. Any project that is built in the community has to go through a specific process with BID. And this is, this project will be no different. The amount of, you know, baiting and trapping pre-construction would be, you know, not unlike any other project that gets built in the neighborhood. With respect to the parking concern, we do recall that being brought up in the community. As I said, you know, not, not every project, we feel, can address parking on-site. In this particular case, we made a very specific effort to include parking at grade based upon those comments and concerns we heard very early on in the process. So that's one of the reasons why we do have four spaces in the garage level. Again, pointing out that this is also located in close proximity to Orient Heights T Station, a very short walk to the station as well. So I just want to make sure we added those comments for purposes of the, of the hearing.
Thank you. With that, is there any additional comment from the board before we take a vote? Hearing none? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to put forward a motion of approval with BPDA Design Review.
Do I have a second?
One second, sir.
Ms. Better Baraza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes, I think this is an appropriate location to add some new housing and even though it needs some relief for three stories, the height of it is also a bit below what we're seeing in some of the other proposals around East Boston. So I do feel that the requests are appropriate.
Thank you. Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Okay, the next case is 423 William McClellan was deferred. The next case is BOA 1280423 with an address of 5 Magnolia Place. In Dorchester, the, to convert a single-family dwelling to a three-story two-family dwelling, spanned house print print is shown on the proposed plan with one tandem space, as in two parking spaces. This is a homeowner filing. The violations are Article 10, limitation of off-street parking. Parking spaces in the side yard shall be separated five feet from the side lot line. That shall not be located in the front yard area. Article 50, Section 29, not insufficient usable open space. Article 50, Section 29, lot area insufficient. Article 50, Section 43, design of the tandem spaces and maneuverability. Article 50, Section 29, lot area insufficient. Minimum required 4,000, proposed 3,162. Article 50, Section 29, floor area ratio is excessive. The max allowed is .8 when the proposed is .99. Article 50, Section 29, front yard insufficient, minimum required is 20, proposed is eight and a half, with a proposed entry porch. And Article 50, Section 29, side yard insufficient, minimum required 10, proposed 4.6. Would the proponent announce themselves and read their name and address into the file, please?
Hello, my name is Akash Lala, the homeowner of 5 Magnolia Place.
Thank you. Can you, can you explain your proposal?
Yes, I want to convert my single-family house into a two-family house. And how I propose to do that is by removing the, the roof and adding a floor. And also, the, the proposed addition is 17 feet by 24 feet, extending towards the, the rear of the house. The, the first unit will be two bedrooms and the second unit will be three bedrooms. And the second unit will span the second floor and third floor.
Can you, can you kind of walk through the violations? Yeah.
Yeah. So the, the limitation of off-street parking, that, where, that was discussed during my, during the last hearing. And, you know, we, so as a result, I had to propose tandem parking, which is parking back-to-back. But, but the issue with that, that was raised by Bob, I'm not recalling his last name right now, but it is, it was too tight. So what I had done, it, it was too tight because I had, on the side of the house, I had stairs leading up to the second floor entrance. But I moved that entrance point from the side of the driveway to the front of the house. And so that, that left more room for, for parking in the driveway.
Thank you. Is Mr. D'Amico on, or do you have a letter from him, Mr. Aiken?
I, I'm in, Madam Chair, I don't see anything. Oh, sorry. Yes, Bob did write that he has no problem with tandem parking designs that is private, as long as it does not penetrate into the front yard.
Thank you. Ms. Better Baraza, have you reviewed the plans?
Yes, the drawings are adequate. I do just see front yard parking with one vehicle. Just wanted to make note of that.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, may I have public testimony?
Sorry, Madam Chair, I do have one question.
Oh, yes.
If we could just hear from Jeff, Jeff Hampton a little bit, because the recommendation had been that the project should not proceed based upon excessive FAR. I know it is in a three-family district, so I'm just wondering if we can get a little bit more BPDA context.
Mr. Hampton?
Yeah, I, I think when you go from a one to a two, I think it was just.
I can, I can refresh. So I, my, my proposal before, it was a, I was proposing a seven-foot rear lot setback. That was my, my initial proposal back last January or December. And now I'm proposing 18 feet setback from the building to the rear, rear lot line. So that, that was a big, you know, a very big change that reduced the, the FAR.
And this was one of those cases where the plans did change substantially and also with the change of the stairway that was going into the parking area. We weren't a fan of that, nor was BTD at the time. So that played into our recommendation for to now without prejudice. We only get one bite at the apple, so to speak, on plans like this. So I think our recommendation may have been different if we had seen this from the beginning.
Yes, and this is a three-family, 5,000-zone district? So it's not out of the ordinary what's being proposed?
Thank you. May I take public testimony?
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Keisha Sanatana from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held in a butters meeting and they met with their local civics where they received support. There is no known concerns or oppositions that was brought to our office. And at this point, we would like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other testimony? Jessica? Okay, with that, I'm going to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with BPDA Design Review.
Do I have a second?
Is it possible, and let me know if this is, I'm wondering if we should reduce parking to just one so you don't violate the front yard parking, but it's up to you. Oh, no, I'm talking to my, this is the first. Yeah, calling who should, put the forward, put the motion forward.
But I would still answer that with recommendation from Jeff. Or Bob. Bob's not on, so. I agree. I have no problem with that. We can put that into the motion as well.
Well, is the question.
Can you pull it up?
Yeah, I mean, the site plan typically, Bob and D'Amico does not like front yard parking. So, but again, he's not here. But we could, we could suggest BTD review, BTD review.
Yeah, he could do that.
I think that would make sense.
We do that since he's not here.
May I, may I ask a quick question of clarification? So it, to me, the driveway that provides access to that second stall would be there anyway? So I just wonder, does it make sense to limit the parking on-site if it's paved regardless? But I would defer my colleagues.
It's, yeah, it's deep enough where you would not have front yard parking with one vehicle.
No. I, I don't think I'm personally as concerned with the front yard parking, but I'm happy to defer to my colleagues.
Mr. Shepherd, would you like to revise the, your, revise to include BTD review?
Include the front, the loss of privilege for front yard parking? Yes, I will. I will go with my colleague on this one. So I would like to make a motion to have the BPDA Design Review and also limit the front yard parking or exclude the front yard parking.
Okay, do I have?
I second that.
Okay, all in favor, I mean, sorry. Ms. Better Baraza?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next case is companion case. We have BOA 950222 at.
We have BOA 950222, address 1 Carmen Street in Dorchester. To construct new three, three-story, three-unit residential building in association with lot subdivision. The violations are all Article 65, 65-41, off-street loading requires. The remainder are all Article 65, Section 9, lot area insufficient, lot width insufficient, lot frontage insufficient, floor area ratio excessive, building height excessive number of stories, front yard insufficient, side yard insufficient, and rear yard insufficient. The companion case is BOA 950227, address 1A Carmen Street. The, this is for subdivision of the existing lot at 1 Carmen Street to create two lots with a parcel, with a new parcel of 27, 20 square feet. The violations here are Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking requirement is insufficient. The remainder are all Article 65, Section 9, dimensional regulations. Minimum lot width requirement is insufficient. Minimum lot frontage requirement is insufficient. Minimum lot size required for the existing three-family after subdivision is insufficient. Floor area ratio is excessive. Usable open space is insufficient, and side yard requirement is insufficient. Would the applicant please identify themselves, read their name and address into the record?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, and members of the board. My name is Mike Ross. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Prince Lobel. Congratulations to you, Madam Chair, and to Ms. Bedder-Brazza for returning, and to the new members, welcome. It's good to see you all. In the time that you called this, you called the 11:30 deferral call, and in the time that now, present, I've had a conversation with the District City Council. There is still some opposition, Madam Chair, on this matter. He had some proposals and ideas on how we might be able to address those concerns, and my client agreed. So what I'd like to do with your permission and the board's permission, Madam Chair, is to request a deferral in the effort to try to get to yes with this community.
Thank you, that sounds like a good idea. May I have a motion?
Motion for deferral.
I second.
Ms. Bedder-Brazza?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd? Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Well, Chair also votes yes, motion carries. Good luck with that.
Thank you all very much.
Is February 28th, 11:30, is that too soon?
Could you allow for March 14th, Mr. Aiken?
Madam Chair? March 14th at, at 11:30?
That would be great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, final case of the day. BOA 1348905, address 120 to 124 Babson Street in Matapan. This is for 15 independent elderly housing plus adult daycare on the ground floor. There are two violations, Article 60, Section 8 for both of them. Use of elderly housing is forbidden, and daycare center elderly is, would be a conditional use. The applicant identified themselves and read their name and address into the record.
Is the applicant present?
Hello?
Are you the applicant?
Yeah, my name is Cliff, and I'm representing 120 Babson Street.
Okay. Can you put your full name and address into the record?
Clifton Lewis, 120 Babson Street, Boston, R.A.
Okay, can you walk us through the progress?
We're asking for a deferment.
Oh, you're seeking a deferral?
Yes, please.
Okay.
If we're still doing...
Okay, may I entertain a motion to defer? Sorry, can actually, can you unmute, Cliff? Can he give us a sense of why and what timeframe he needs?
Hello?
Yes. Can you, can you share your reasons and the timeline, timeline you need so Mr. Aiken can give you an appropriate new date?
When would the next date be for you guys?
It'd be February 28th.
February 28th?
Well, we need to make a motion first, like, we're just trying to understand your reason for deferral.
No, because we were trying to reach, so there was like a, it's not an issue, like, there was just like a misunderstanding with, with whether we were going through Article 80, but, so I guess that's what they were trying to fix with the drawings and everything, like making adjustments and stuff like that.
Got it, thank you. And, and just the, the notice says 18 independent elderly, and you've stated 15...
It'll be less, it'll be less than that. It'll be less than that.
So you can just correct that as well?
If I could, if I could ask Madam Chair, how much less?
Yes, how much less?
I think four units less, if I'm not wrong.
Okay.
Okay.
15 is the threshold for Article 80, that's why.
Yeah, so it would...
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, we have, we have an updated refusal from November 22nd for 15, so it sounds like there might be a further revision to that.
Okay, that sounds good. So with that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to ask, if I may, Cliff, if you can tell us what are the reasons for considering reducing the number of units?
So we're also having an elderly daycare on the first floor, so we own one in Hyde Park already, and then, you know, reducing the units, because we don't, we've been in the building for a while now. And I know if we go 18, it's, it will be longer. I have to wait for another year to go through that process. So I would rather just have 14 elderly housing and, and adult daycare on the first floor versus waiting for a whole other year.
I mean, Giovanni, you bring up a really good public discussion, because we are in a need of housing, right? But it's being noted that the applicant doesn't want to go through a lengthy process. Jeff, can you speak on that? Isn't there going to be a more expedited process for those that are providing housing for vulnerable populations?
Yeah, and I don't want to give the impression that we're opposed to elderly housing. It's just the number that flashes out at you. And, yes, we're trying to get an expedited process for affordable housing, hopefully elderly housing, but if the applicant is going to go less than 15 units, then he wouldn't have to do that anyway.
Yeah, I think the, I think the, maybe the threshold is too low. Is that what I'm hearing?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I know what everybody's getting at, and what we're working at here in my shop in terms of trying to get things permitted as quickly as possible, but since they're already in the queue, they're going to have to just go forward now, so going less than 15, I think, would be beneficial.
Yeah, I think that at this point, this is the applicant's choice in order to proceed more expeditiously, so if someone would, if, if someone can make a motion for him, that would be great. At this...
Make a, a motion to defer?
Can I have a second? Ms. Bedder-Brazza?
Yes.
And Mr. Shepherd? Did Mr. Shepherd speak? Okay, sorry. Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Mr. Aiken?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. We'll see you soon. Do you have a new date for him?
Yes, the February 28th is available. Is that enough time to make the revision, to submit new plans?
It would, yes, it would be. Is there a sooner date than that by any chance? Like a month from now?
No, that, that will be your, that will be your first date, February 28th at 11:30.
Okay, all right, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, we've concluded our first, our first session as a new board, so congratulations.
Congrats.
We survived. Good job, all.
Take care.
Take care.
Thank you.